Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Monday, May 12, 2025, City Council meeting. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Stone?
Here.
Councilmember Lethard-Hames?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Here.
Councilmember Lou?
Here.
Councilmember Rechtal?
Here.
Mayor Lowing?
Here.
And Councilmember Burke, for the record, all present.
Thank you very much. We have a number of fun orders of the, special orders of the day. And that's first up on our agenda is proclamations honoring two very successful young women in the field of wrestling, California Interscholastic Federation State Wrestling Champion, Ella Cohen and Angela Ying, excuse me if I said that wrong, the state runner-up. So I have a proclamation for each written up and Vice Mayor Vinker is going to be reading that.
That's my honor to read these. We're delighted to be able to. Whereas Ella Cohen, a freshman at Palo Alto High School, has demonstrated exceptional athletic ability and commitment to wrestling. And whereas Ella Cohen won the 2025 USA Wrestling Girls National High School Showcase Tournament. And whereas Ella Cohen has achieved the remarkable feat of winning the California Interscholastic Federation State Wrestling Championship in the 105-pound division. And whereas this accomplishment is a testament to Ella Cohen's hard work, skill, and the support she has received from her coaches, family, and the Palo Alto High School Athletic Program. And whereas Ella Cohen's achievement brings pride and recognition to Palo Alto High School and the City of Palo Alto. Now therefore, Ed Lowing, Mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the entire City Council, does hereby recognize and congratulate Ella Cohen for her outstanding achievement in winning the CIF State Wrestling Championship. We commend her dedication, sportsmanship, and the positive impact she has on our community. Presented May 12, 2025. And and I want to get this right. Is it Zhang or what's the right? Zhang, Zhang. Okay, thank you. This one honoring Angelina Zhang. Whereas Angelina Zhang, a senior at Gunn High School, has shown exceptional athletic ability and commitment to wrestling. And whereas Angelina Zhang won the 2024 Brian Keck Preseason Girls National Wrestling Tournament. And whereas Angelina Zhang has distinguished herself as a runner-up in the 155-pound division at the California Interscholastic Federation State Wrestling Tournament. And whereas Angelina Zhang followed this up by winning the California Freestyle Wrestling Championship in Fresno. And whereas this accomplishment is a testament to Angelina Zhang's hard work, skill, and the support she has received from her coaches, family, and the Gunn High School Athletic Program. And whereas Angelina Zhang's achievement brings pride and recognition to Gunn High School and the City of Palo Alto. Now therefore, Ed Lowing, Mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the entire City Council, does hereby recognize and congratulate Angelina Zhang for her outstanding achievement as a runner-up in the CIF State Wrestling Tournament. We commend her dedication, sportsmanship, and the positive impact she has on our community. Presented May 12, 2025. Congratulations.
I would love to have Ms. Zhang come up here for a picture with the council. Unfortunately, Ms. Cohen couldn't be here. I also want to say as a former wrestler, stated very reluctantly, I was a very good, I was very good in practice. And I know how hard that sport is. So it's just, it's just the stunning accomplishment for you to do this at state level. Just phenomenal. So come on up.
I just want to add while you're walking up, as a former professional women's sports league executive, it matters what you did and what you're doing. So thank you for representing us so well.
Okay, um, so that was very well written. So I don't have a whole bunch to say, but I definitely just want to repeat that I'm really thankful for my coaches, Coach Manning and Coach Creighton for helping me throughout the season. I definitely saw a lot of improvement throughout the season with their help and through my teammates' help as well, just with improving my technique and getting to a point where I could actually accomplish something like that. You know, it was something I didn't really think I could do at the start, but I started to get more confident throughout the year and I think I finished really strong. I definitely want to thank the city and the school for helping all they can with the program and with wrestling in general in the city. And I'm hoping for you guys' continued support because I think this is a really good type of sport for the youth to be doing. I think it really promotes good growth and perseverance. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our second item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing National Police Week, May 11 to 17, and National Peace Officers Memorial Day as May 15, 2025. And I have a proclamation that I've signed that I'd like to read. Whereas the US Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15, 2025, as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of the Palo Alto Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of its citizens. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department. And that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the City of Palo Alto asks all citizens to join in honoring the police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in so doing, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Now therefore, I, Ed Lowing, Mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the entire City Council, hereby proclaim the week of May 11 to 17 as Police Week and urge all citizens of Palo Alto to observe Thursday, May 15, 25, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Presented May 12, 2025. Chief Bender?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Andrew Bender, Police Chief. Thank you, Mayor, for that reading. Thank you, Council, for your support once again. I'm grateful for President John F. Kennedy's vision in 1962 to sign the first Police Officer Proclamation and bringing that forward on a national level. And today, as we celebrate Police Officer Memorial Day and Week as part of National Police Week. Woven into our national fabric that honors the brave men and women of law enforcement, is Palo Alto's own sacrificial thread comprised of three police officers who gave their lives in service to this community. Let us never forget Palo Alto Reserve Officer Lester Cole, Palo Alto Officer Gene Clifton, and Palo Alto Officer, Reserve Officer Theater Bressina. I also want to thank and recognize the brave men and women of the Palo Alto Police Department who today serve with unwavering dedication, honorably with respect and integrity, and the critical role they play in ensuring the safety of our community. So much of the great work they do doesn't make the daily headlines or the latest next-door thread, but has a profound positive impact on the individuals and the families in this community whose lives they touch. I'd like to finish up by inviting members of this community, the public, and anyone who's listening to Cogswell Plaza on Wednesday morning, the 14th, where we'll be holding our annual Police Officer Memorial Grove at 9:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you very much on behalf of the council, speaking for all of your officers and staff. The next item on the agenda, I'll turn over to the city clerk. It's a review of list of applicants and select candidates for interviews for the Architectural Review Board.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As you may recall, we interviewed three candidates for the Architectural Review Board on March 24. And on March 27, staff opened the extended recruitment. The recruitment closed April 30 and yielded a total of nine new applicants. Voting was conducted via an emailed survey link to all council members and all final votes were received prior to tonight's council meeting. The following applicants have been selected to proceed to interview scheduled for June 27. Yes. Oh, yes. The candidates, the candidates are Ashutosh Gupta, Bayshu, Danny Cow, Grace Lee, Kellen Bott, Martin Jojarth, Matthew Kelly, and Avine Govind. Thank you to all who have applied.
Yes, tonight, just for the public benefit, tonight we're selecting folks to interview and that will be about two weeks out. City clerk?
Yes, that'll be for June 27. I'm sorry, May 27.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, moving right along, we're going to see if there are any agenda changes, additions, or deletions. A roving city manager said there's none. So we'll move right up to public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And how many speakers do we have?
We have four requests to speak.
Pardon?
Four requests to speak.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Liz G.
Thank you. I'm here to speak on some living conditions at the Mayfield Place, related Mayfield Place, 2500 El Camino Real. This was an agreement between the City of Palo Alto and Stanford to provide low-income, affordable housing to hard-working families. The building itself is in great decline. It came online in 2017. This includes compromised concrete that was poured on the third floor. I live with my family on the third floor. It's disintegrating. This has been well documented. I also want to report that they are raising the rents again. My rent has been raised $400 come July 1, along with many other residents of this low-income Mayfield Agreement property. My rent was raised $600 in April 1 of 2024. We just got code-level hot water after six months. And as a result, we now have drainflies all over the units. I'm speaking to you, Mayor, this evening, tonight, Mayor Ed Lowing, that the city look into the structural structure of this building because it just keeps getting worse and they just keep raising the rents. I also want to let you know that there is retail on the bottom floor. I'm very supportive of retail, but there is a small business called Fambrini's on the first floor, which I think is also contributing to the fly infestation. My son is graduating from high school in less than a month. Instead of concentrating and focusing on the joy of him getting through high school, going into college, and receiving scholarships, I'm having to deal with drainflies. Three abate, three treatments have not abated the problem. My nose stings when they come in and treat the drains. It is not being abated. Code enforcement has been alerted. They are coming to the property. Fambrini's has an extraordinary amount of business. They do waffles with tons of syrup and cream and sugar and fruits. I believe that they are pouring syrup down the drains and they're coming up or it's a result of
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Al.
Hi, good evening, council. Thank you for the hard work that you've been doing on the budget process, especially the finance committee and staff from all the city departments that make Palo Alto such a special place. I'm here to ask for a city response to the announced expansion of San Francisco Airport. The comments are due on June 2, and you have an opportunity to speak to the San Francisco Planning Commission on May 20. I sent an email with a graphic which describes how great, how traffic from all the airports in the area evolved during COVID and stacked against complaints. So there was a cliff. When COVID struck, air traffic went down and complaints went down. And then you'll see the evolution of complaints as the traffic goes up. So it doesn't seem like anything right now. It's kind of like when you have, you don't expect a flood to happen tomorrow. You don't expect a wildfire to happen tomorrow. You don't expect something really bad to happen. It happened to us in 2014 here in Palo Alto. And I can tell you that the response from the community, when they were, we were surprised with the level of change from some changes made by the, at that time, by the Federal Aviation Administration. The change was so dramatic. It impacted, I mean, I'll come back and share the history. What I want to say is that this is, what we've learned in the process is, this is 100% in the city's scope of responsibility. At the time, they said, oh, there's something that we can do. We've learned everything that we can do. And it is as if you would want to ask us to pave this, you know, the sidewalks. You wouldn't want us doing that. So it's really a city responsibility and I want to stress that. So we can do a lot of things as individuals. We can respond, but our basic responsibility is to let you know how, how this is so impactful. So what happens in these situations, we have an example. In Oakland, Oakland announced an expansion, Alameda threatened to sue, and they got a settlement agreement. The settlement agreement has all of these promises of how they're going to keep things the way they are. And in some cases, that might be okay for some people. In some cases, it's not okay for others. So in the case of Alameda, who they represent will be okay, but the problems in East Oakland are going to be horrible. So what happens is that some cities, you know, may or may not be affected. But part of the issue is that you really want to know how we're affected. The other thing we felt when this happened in 2014 is that the city had dropped the ball. It had many opportunities to work on it.
Your time is up.
So I'm hoping you'll respond. Thank you.
Sorry, what was the date in May?
May 20. And there's an email. You can go to the skyposypaloalto.org website and at the top is an email. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol G.
Greetings, City Council members and community. My name is Carol Garston. I'm the founder and producer of Third Thursday California Avenue Music Festival. We're celebrating our second anniversary with the theme, "We Are Together." And it's about bringing our community together, which is the whole goal of Third Thursday California Avenue Music Festival. We'd like to invite you and everybody in our community to come out to this free monthly year-on music festival. It's amazing that we've gone 25 months now. We're having the warmest day of the week, 75 degrees on Cal Ave on Thursday, and we have great music. Our, our headliner is Anthony Aria, who's from Santa Cruz and went to Stanford, graduated in 2024, and he was on The Voice at age 16. So you won't want to miss coming out and seeing Anthony Aria. And we have cake, courtesy of Stanford Research Park. And of course, we are very excited that our Vice Mayor, Vicky Venker, will come out and be making some comments. So everybody come out and join our community and celebrate. We are together on Cal Ave this third Thursday, this Thursday, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. See you there.
Our next speaker is Tingren C.
Good evening, Mayor Lowing, council members, and members of the community. My name is Rayla Chen, and I'm currently a junior at Henry M. Gunn High School. I'm here today on behalf of Vote 16 Palo Alto, an initiative I co-founded with four other students who believe in expanding civic engagements. Our mission is simple, to lower the municipal voting age here in Palo Alto to 16. Young people are already deeply affected by the decisions made in this room on climate, education, transportation, and housing. That our civic engagement, I believe, has already been proven by the founding of organizations such as the Palo Alto Youth Climate Advisory Board, as well as the Palo Alto Youth Council. And I, we believe that it's officially time to give us a vote in shaping those decisions. We're proud to be working with Vote 16 USA, a national movement helping local communities empower youth voters and achieve this success. They recently assisted with successful campaigns in cities such as Tacoma Park and College Park, Maryland. But while national support is valuable, real change comes here, starts here at home and comes with you guys. That's why my colleagues and I are here this evening in hopes of beginning a collaborative process with our city council, as well as, as we plan to move towards a more formal ordinance that would infranchise 16- and 17-year-old youth voters in local elections. We are not just asking for votes. We are asking for partnership, for thoughtful engagement, and for a city that leads the way in democratic innovation. We are ready to work with you to make this happen. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to continuing this conversation. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sven T.
Thank you, City Council members. Normally, I'm here to talk about climate change, but tonight, we're going to do some high school chemistry. What I'm concerned about, what we all are concerned about, is the health of our children. What we have recently learned is with natural gas stoves, which burn methane, CH4, that methane, and we don't understand the science yet, is converted to a carcinogen called benzene, which I'm pretty sure you all have heard of because it's on the Prop 65 hazardous warning label for California. I'm more concerned about the health of our children because in addition to the benzene, we also have oxides of nitrogen. And kids with underdeveloped, with small, growing avioli are particularly affected by oxides of nitrogen. So we're both causing cancer in the homes because of our utility, and we're also damaging kids. So this is one case where if you have a really poorly insulated, unvent, poorly ventilated house, this actually may be to your benefit. But we're seeing one, two, three times level health effect levels for benzene in homes. So I'm concerned right about the kids, but I'm also concerned about our utility under Prop 65, that we could be subject, our utility, to lawsuits over exposure to benzene because we know that we are exposing our citizens to it through the combustion of this gas, CH4 molecule, to the C6H molecule, benzene, that carcinogen. So we, every, I get, who here gets paper bill from the utility? Raise your hand. Okay, so you know that we put a lot of, the utility puts a lot of good work into those inserts. And so I feel like every month, And so I feel like every month, we need to have a Prop 65 warning there and saying that our utility wants to fix this problem by going to all-electric induction, conventional electric, okay? But this is a carcinogen and it's new, it's the new learning. It's like thinking about cigarette smoke 40 years ago. When there's no way in hell you're going to get rid of cigarette smoking in my restaurant. And now where we are, we can be leaders here. Think about this, prepare the utility. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julia Z.
All right, good evening, city council members. I hope you're all doing well. I'm Julia Zeitlin, a freshman at Stanford University and director of the 2024-2025 Bay Area Heat Mapping Campaign. Please skip to slide four. Thank you. Last year, the Palo Alto Student Climate Coalition led a heat mapping campaign through the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration's Urban Heat Island Mapping Initiative. Together with local cities, community organizations and volunteers, we mapped the distribution of heat throughout Palo Alto, East Palo Alto and Menlo Park. We partnered with the City of Palo Alto, the City of East Palo Alto, Bell Haven Action and more community organizations. Slide please. On one of the hottest days of the summer last year, we had 30 volunteers drive a total of 180 miles from sunrise to sunset to collect heat, temperature and location data. Slide please. We have since compiled this data and created these heat maps, these visual maps that demonstrate the data we collected at three different times of day for all three cities. Slide please. And so the darker red areas that you see on these maps indicate where there are highest temperatures or these hotspots within our community. We find that due to the urban heat island effect, most of these hotspots are located in dense urban areas with high rates of asphalt and concrete, impervious surfaces that trap heat, store it and radiate it out into the atmosphere throughout the day and well into the evening. And so the trees and the breeze from the bay, as we can see in the blue areas, that's what keeps this, keeps those blue areas cooler. Slide please. I'm excited to announce that we are now moving into the second phase of our campaign by launching the Cool Cities Coalition. The Cool Cities Coalition is planning to lead a joint, three-city-wide tree planting campaign in Bell Haven, Menlo Park with Canopy alongside volunteers from all three cities. We're really excited to bring the residents that helped collect this data and more into this process of implementing a cooling solution in one of the areas that our maps demonstrated as high risk on days of extreme heat. Our coalition is also organizing a heat summit, an event this summer aimed at bringing Bay Area cities together to discuss and explore best practices for protecting our cities against the rising threat of extreme heat. Please skip to the next, the last slide, please. So we're very excited about the data that we've collected and putting it to use and now seeing that we have these areas that are at high risk during days of extreme heat. Now how can we protect the residents in those areas? And so I wanted to conclude, conclude my comment tonight by thanking the City of Palo Alto and the council for your support of this data collection effort, addressing extreme heat as a priority and to welcome you to these events. And if you'd like to work with me on this work further and learn more about the data, please let me know. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on items not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. We return to the dais and do any council member questions, comments or announcements? Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one. Yesterday, both the Vice Mayor and I attended an event. It was Messages in Media. It was put on by many local youth activists and local nonprofit to essentially kind of get, to try to break down hyper-partisanship within our, within our media, sorry, within our politics and kind of the media's role in that. And there were a lot of incredible speakers. There was State Senator Josh Becker gave the keynote, some Stanford professors. And then the Vice Mayor and I did a fun panel where we acted like council members. And we were able to hear the students kind of their own pitches for various policies that they'd like to see implemented within the city. And we were able to grill them like we do our own staff and, and vote. And it was a, it was a great, yeah, it was a great event.
Thank you. Councilmember Venker?
Yes, a couple of things. First, I just wanted to mention that last week, there was a meeting of a Santa Clara County Commission that I sit on. It's the Recycling and Waste Reduction Commission. And one of the agenda items, I think, is pertinent to our city in particular. And I just wanted to flag it for colleagues and staff, which is there was an item about extended producer responsibility. So what is that? These are household hazardous waste products that sometimes can cause real trouble when disposed of improperly and can jeopardize our own, you know, hazardous household waste, recycling and dealing with them, disposal, I should say. So I, I wanted to flag it because the, the commission did act to direct staff to explore adopting a household hazardous waste extended producer responsibility ordinance for the county. But we do our own here. So it's something we might just want to be aware of because there are some state bills pending. But they are, the presenters cautioned that it could get harder and harder to insure our facilities because of the extraordinary, extraordinarily bad things that happen when people dispose of hazardous household waste improperly. So it's looking to have producers who make this stuff have to conclude sort of end of life and disposal responsibilities and costs in, in their, on their own and also to help with education and prevention. So it's just something that we may want to be aware of since we handle that. We're the only city in the county, I believe, that handles it outside of the county. And then the other thing relates back to the resolution we adopted a couple of months ago with respect to Palo Alto values and the actions of the federal government. And in that, we had a provision that one of the things we could do when appropriate was to take legal action, including bringing or joining lawsuits. And that we would explore that in closed session upon the request of two or three council members. And so there's a couple I'd actually like to bring to my colleagues' attention. One in particular, you probably saw on the Weekly or elsewhere, that relates to addressing the administration's efforts to institute a massive workforce reduction. And the county, our own county of Santa Clara and the county of San Francisco and a few other entities filed a lawsuit and successfully got a TRO to pause that workforce reduction. Judge Susan Ilston in San Francisco issued that in the federal court there. And, you know, I've reported previously on some of the workforce reductions that have impacted our federal hydropower projects and other sources of electric, electricity supply right here in Palo Alto. And we've heard there are further reductions at DOE and elsewhere that are under, that are being contemplated by the administration. And this pushes back on that and freezes those efforts. So I would make a request and, and see if there are other colleagues who would join me that we agendize a closed session where we can discuss whether to participate in that lawsuit, whether by joining or if there's an amicus brief opportunity. And similarly, I have learned from staff that the one that we discussed at the time we adopted the resolution, which is also a federal lawsuit, also brought primarily by the counties of Santa Clara and San Francisco and some other municipalities, that relates to the freezing of Department of Justice grants to cities like ours for entities that are not cooperating with ICE and other enforcement, immigration enforcement efforts. So that one, we had explored at the time and found that there was a direct impact here in the city. So I would request the agendizing in closed session of a case entitled American Federation of Government Employees versus Trump and another one, City and County of San Francisco v. Trump, which are the official names of the two cases I just described. Thank you.
Councilmember Lou? Councilmember Lithgow-Hames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Procedurally, seeing as this is the first time we've had a matter put before us like this, where a council member is suggesting that we join lawsuit, I will just convey my interest. I defer to Vice Mayor Venker's on this. I, she knows far more than I do. And if, if that's a suggestion, then I'm, I'm interested in agendizing the American Federation and the City and County of San Francisco suits as well. So just wanted to say that for the record, if that's allowed, if I'm even allowed to say that. Okay, as for my announcements, first of all, I'm, was delighted to be one of a handful of council members who went to the employee appreciation event, the picnic last Thursday in Mitchell Park in a city that has just over 1,000 employees. It felt like close to 1,000 employees were there. It was an extraordinary display of the complex diversity of offerings this city is up to. And I delighted in meeting so many different staff from so many different units and what they had in common was longevity. Yes, I met some newcomers, but in the main, I met people who've been working for this city for so long and you have to ask why. And the answer was always some version of, it's a great city to work for. I love my job. I love the people I work with. I love the city. And it was really heartening. There was a rock wall. I did not climb it. But delighted to see the city offer fun recreational activities alongside a lovely meal to thank employees for all of their hard work and dedication. And if I could ask the clerk to put up my slide, I don't know if you guys got it. I'm happy to be cosponsoring an event this Thursday at Third Thursday's second anniversary. It's called Young Minds Celebrated. And this is a, she's trying to find my slide. This is a, a youth performance pop-up event that I've put on a couple of times. We invite youth aged 12 to 19 to perform music, to sing a song, to play an instrument, to perform spoken word, to do a monologue or a short talk or spoken word, if I already mentioned that. And it's short performances that are very low-key, designed to just be an easy place to be yourself, share your talent and be appreciated by a very warm audience. So we are going to be putting up Young Minds Celebrated, cosponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and the Palo Alto Youth Council from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. So an hour before Third Thursday actually starts, we will be there on the corner of Cal Ave and Mimosa Lane, which is that alleyway right adjacent to that beautiful mural of California poppies at the corner of Country Sun. And so we'll be there. We're going to just pop up right at that stop sign that's there. And delighted to be supported also by the new owners of 414 Cal Ave in that effort. So come on out and see some of our Palo Alto youth, 12 to 19, you know, putting themselves out there to demonstrate a talent. The first time I did this, I was very heartened because a kid signed up saying, I have, I need stress-free places to practice my violin and I think this event will be stress-free. And I said, that's exactly right. We want to create opportunities for you to just do your thing. And it's not about a test or being evaluated. You just are going to be appreciated for what you offer. So Young Minds Celebrated, Thursday, May 15th, 5:00 PM at Mimosa Lane and California Avenue. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few comments. I had another busy week. Delighted to speak at the Youth Art and Creative Connections Event at the Arts Center with our Arts Center Director speaking. Superintendent spoke, as, as did I. Just absolutely delighted at the quantity and quality of the art that was done by our young kids, I mean, really young kids, elementary school kids and so on. They had massive sculptures that looked like they were professional. It was just a group project of the elementary school. So impressed with the talent that, that we have here. And my only goal was to, besides congratulate them, was to urge them to keep it going. Don't lose it. Stay with it your whole life. It doesn't have to be your vocation, but it's so helpful to, to all of us and not just, not just yourself. So it was jammed, packed. And the speakers had a little bit of competition from the ice cream. But other than that, it was a great event. Secondly, on an entirely different note, the HRC helped organize, or actually drove the organization of a faith leaders conference where the police chief and assistant chief met with faith leaders from literally all faiths. With a very large turnout, a very dedicated effort to make that happen. And I attended that to continue the dialogue that was started last year and this time specifically with faith leaders to see how their leadership in their respective congregations or, or not even congregations, just, you know, their, their sort of belief systems can be leveraged to fight any kind of bias, antisemitism, anti-Muslim, or just any, any kind of bias. And one of the outcomes of that is they now have a list of people that they can call if something comes up to spread the word. So that new, those new connections that they made, I hope can be leveraged again if there's a problem, but also if there's a suggestion proactively of what we can do if something like this is thought through. Yes, I, I have an overlap with Third Thursday and I have to give a talk somewhere else, but I'm hoping to, after dessert, still come down to, to the Third Thursday. And I also wanted to echo the comments on Appreciation Week, where I had the opportunity to go to two of them. One here in City Hall and then the, the lunch down at Mitchell Park, which was fantastic. And you also found out avocations or, or second careers of some of the staff that you have in the city too, with the, the HR Assistant Director is a heck of an MC when he's doing basketball games and competition. And our fire chief who was trying to beat everybody. So it was, as, as Councilmember Lithgow-Hames said, it was just a great, joyous celebration of, of all work in here. So delighted to go there. Okay. Any others? No? Oh, Councilmember Lithgow-Hames?
Yes, if I could just ask for my flyer to be put up, I appreciate it, clerk. Because there's a QR code on there. I was just going to say if we're still, we still have a few slots for performers. So if you know a 12 to 19-year-old who would like to play an instrument, sing a song, do spoken word, share a talk or a monologue, please screenshot this, have them register through that QR code. It's just a simple signup form and we'll take it from there. We're still looking for a couple more performers. So please take the opportunity, if someone comes to mind as I say this, a talented 12 to 19-year-old, please share this exciting event with them. Thanks.
More lights are coming on. Councilmember Stone?
I just wanted to weigh in with my support for Vice Mayor's suggestion that we go into closed session on the two, on the two cases.
I would support that as well.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify for the public that the purpose of the closed session is to consider joining a lawsuit. So no decision's been made at this time.
Right.
That's it. I, I understand that this is a time-sensitive issue. And as such, the city attorney and I were just conferring. There is, I was going to say a possibility. I think if, if the council is interested, we will need to add it to your agenda next week. In which case, we know it's already a packed agenda. So we will do what we can to try to manage what's on there.
Okay. Thank you. And now we're going to move to the first study session of the evening, which is scheduled between 6:30 and 8:00, and that is the proposed operating capital budget.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers of the public, Lauren Lai, Chief Financial Officer. So tonight, we're bringing back to you the fiscal '26 proposed operating and capital budgets. As you may recall, we had the transmittal last week. And then last week also Finance Committee had two robust days of workshopping. So I want to just thank the Finance Committee for your commitment and your time and the energy that we put into it last week. And really wanted to appreciate all that work that we did together. So next slide, please. So as a reminder for ourselves and others, here we are with the budget calendar and the conversations. On May 5th, we transmitted the budget and had some preliminary thoughts exchanged by the council. Last week, on May 6th and 7th, we had two days of full workshop. And the committee worked diligently and provided a lot of feedback. Tonight, we are re-cockasing with the council to check in from the Finance Committee and also with the council on current Finance Committee recommendations. We will bring this back next week for Finance Committee to do what we call a budget wrap-up. That's when they will formally put together the recommendations. And then formal adoption is scheduled for June 16th. As a reminder, we have the nonprofit partnership work plan phase one. The applications have come in. We will summarize that for you tonight, just for awareness. And also on June 10th, PNS will be reviewing and also recommending awards. June 16th, those will be included as appropriations and grantees will be formally awarded by council. Next slide, please. And so as a high level reminder, the proposed budget for all funds, including operating and capital funds, is $1 billion. The general fund is 312, 312 million, and then capital is about 316 million. We also provide a five-year capital plan. All this material is available online at our city website. Next slide, please. So before we go into the information on the Finance Committee, I just wanted to share that, you know, the proposed budget has various measures in it and reductions. And the committee in its deliberation has advised that we go back and create more capacity in our budgets to take into consideration the uncertainty and the potential economic downturn. So this capacity will give us a little bit more runway in fiscal '26 and also in fiscal '27. Next slide, please. For those that may not be familiar, when we go through the budget deliberation with Finance Committee, we put ideas into three categories. One is a parking lot, which is where we are today on different concepts and ideas. And we're checking in with the council on feedback. In addition, Finance Committee can also propose using council contingencies immediately out of the adopted budget and not during the fiscal year. Last but not least is formal Finance Committee adjustments, which will happen on June 20th. And we also track the status of our budget stabilization reserve. Next slide, please. There's a lot on this slide. And in the cup, a subsequent slide, we'll go over each one of these ideas in more detail. At a high level, what we need to understand on this slide is based on the advice and direction to date from Finance Committee, the fiscal '26 budget would have an approximate savings of 5.9 million. Carrying those savings forward in fiscal '27 and onwards, or at least into fiscal '27, based on current assumptions, we would have savings of another 7.3 million. We'll have a slide that kind of rolls that forward for you, but that's the top line number. A couple of areas to focus on will be the concept of retaining $6 million or more of our uncertainty reserve. In addition, this proposal of deferring capital projects as a subset of that 6 million. There was also recommendation on the fire single role model, a 12-hour peak ambulance, and then also nonprofit funding of an additional 211,000. Okay, so we'll go through that in more detail in the next pages. Next slide, please. So we do a multi-year balancing for you to kind of illustrate our financial position and some of our projections. How to read this is we have three years before you. Fiscal '25 is the current year. Fiscal '26 begins July 1st and then fiscal '27. It begins with our projected shortfall or available savings. And then it goes through the use of uncertainty reserve and or any changes based on Finance Committee deliberation to date. You'll see there in fiscal '25, current year, we have projected zero. Fiscal '26, it will reduce the use of uncertainty reserve and I'll walk us through that. And then also in '27, you may recall that projected deficit was higher than 4.3. So now it's at 4.3. Below the line, we have uncertainty reserve. Previously, it was 12 million. We were gonna use all 12 million in '26. And current direction is to use half of it and keep half for '27 and potentially '28. Budget stabilization reserve remains unchanged at 54. However, based on the change in the appropriation or the size of the general fund budget, that 17.3% improves to 17.6%. Okay. So let me walk you through some of the major items in blue because it'll be unpacked in subsequent pages. In fiscal '26, we had a $12 million forecasted shortfall. We were gonna use 12 million of uncertainty reserve. However, based on current direction, we would reduce that by 5.9. Ongoing funding there, that is $700,000 from new or updated fire transport fees. Those fees were conducted and studied by Matrix and also by Finance Committee. So those new revenues are not included in the published proposed budget. In addition, the peak hour ambulance and the additional funding for nonprofit would add additional costs in '27 and 26 and '27 as illustrated there. So those are the revised numbers for '26. And importantly, Finance Committee deliberation was to also consider our projections for fiscal '27. So as you can see there, fiscal '27 projected shortfall is 4.3 million versus previously it was 9.6. All right. So I'll go through the major facets of Finance Committee direction from last week. Next slide, please. Let's first start with retaining a minimum of $6 million of uncertainty reserve. So instead of using 12, we would use six. The general guidance here from the committee was to split that potentially finding 4 million as one-time savings and a minimum of 2 million of it as ongoing savings with it being effective in 2026 and carrying into 2027. Clarification multiple times with Finance Committee also was that of this $6 million of savings that would also include the reductions of any CIP project deferrals, which we will discuss later. The financial framework for the 6 million would be to look at alternative ways of achieving that savings. That could be revenue enhancements such as new information that we learned that wasn't included in the budget proposals or to date. Alternative funding, as we look through maybe restricted funding sources that we may be able to use for some costs that we have in the proposed budget and then relieve the general fund. Or importantly is in the current year, if we project any fiscal '25 balance carry forward, that could also help us. On the capital project side, it would entail reducing expenses through deferred capital projects, debt financing, which we'll discuss further on May 20th. And then importantly is reviewing our debt service reserve level. We may have some flexibility there that may create an opportunity for us from a cash flow perspective to relieve some strain in the current times. As it relates to the general fund operating savings, we would be reevaluating fiscal '26 proposals. These are proposals that are already included in the published budget. So we may roll some or most of that back. So we'll be reevaluating that in the upcoming weeks as city staff. From a staffing perspective, we would review functions and specifics. So functions meaning services, programs, current urgencies, and how it aligns with council priorities and initiatives. And importantly is looking at current vacancies and how that informs these types of reductions for us one year, two years, or three years. Importantly also is evaluating contracts and general expenses, reducing those and looking at how those may affect council priorities and or any statutes of limitations if we were to suspend any types of contracts for a year, two years, or three years. So looking at different strategies and certainly other adjustments that may also support alternatives to achieving 6 million or more of savings in the current, in the fiscal year '26. Next slide, please. Importantly is looking at policy considerations is how do we achieve this level of savings while, you know, maintaining the services that we come to enjoy and expect. Importantly also is the impact on existing projects and projects yet to be initiated, a prioritization of what council has prioritized and objectives, impact onto the for the community and also for the workforce. Taking all that into consideration, it will take some time to develop and also deliberate with the Finance Committee, the council, community, and our employees. So we propose a multi-step effort to get to the $6 million or more. What we propose is next week, when we reconvene with the Finance Committee, we want to identify the budgetary savings and discuss those as soon as possible with Finance Committee. That agenda pocket goes out Thursday, right? So that's a very short timeline for us to gather that. Whatever that amount is, we would deduct it from the $6 million. Then on June 16th, what we're suggesting is a placeholder within the budget. So we would adopt a budget that would deduct $6 million of basically spending or altogether savings. Those that we identify on May 20th, that Finance Committee will review and deliberate and the balance within the budget. We'll come back on August 19th. That'll give us time to provide all the specifics that are remaining to achieve that remaining savings that we put as a placeholder before Finance Committee. Finance Committee will have an opportunity to review and then make that formal recommendation to council in September. So that's what we're proposing for us to be able to present to the Finance Committee, the council, and the community, something that is thoughtful to achieve at least $6 million and some of which would be ongoing as well. Next slide, please. So now let's talk about the capital improvements. Finance Committee framed it for us as a reduction in increments of 5%. So 5, 10, 15%. And for the purpose of the committee, 5% is about $1.5 million. So 1.5 million, 3 million, and 4 and 1/2 million. Staff foresees most of this would really be one-time savings. And we want to evaluate proposed project timing with the priority of delaying or deferring projects to manage our funding availability. So we have this period of the next three years where cash flow within capital projects is a bit stressed and then it actually gets a little bit better. So we want to prioritize projects accordingly to help deal with this cash flow. We do feel that there is some flexibility to move projects around and look at different investments. But we do want to be transparent that there will be some impacts. We will be looking at matters closely, especially as it relates to potential cost escalation for projects where we know it would not be prudent for us financially to defer them. Some deferred maintenance, which may have, you know, not good deferred costs in two or three years or growing backlogs. So we want to evaluate things in that context. We have presented to the committee a kind of a prioritization of how we would approach de-prioritizing projects, as noted in that blue box. So how we would go about looking at de-prioritizing projects or deferring projects would be is a project aesthetic versus functional. Would it cause a deteriorating condition in the course of one to three years, likely in three years, right? Would projects or portions of projects need to be reworked? Or would it disrupt another project? So we would look at project interdependencies as well. And lastly, but not least, is if we have clear cost escalations, those or if there would be minimal cost escalation, that would be one that we would look at deferring for one to three years. So Public Works, Community Services, Office of Transportation, and OMB will be looking at these projects and coming up with our 5, 10, 15% strategy and be summarizing that in the forthcoming period to deliberate with the Finance Committee. Next slide, please. Let's now speak about fi- fire and ambulance service augmentation. So what the committee evaluated and landed on was what's asterisk there. So let's start with that and let's start with, and then we'll circle back on the fiscal impact. So Finance Committee was presented with a wide range of options of service delivery accompanied with the financial impacts and also the funding requirement. Finance Committee landed with moving forward with a single, the single role model, a phased-in proposal with the 12-hour peak single role ambulance starting with in approximately April 2026. This does not impose overtime on the firefighter workforce, which we heard was not desired. And so that does push out the 12-hour peak single role ambulance to April. In addition, it continues cross-staffing. Now, keep in mind, the cross-staffing we're referring here does include three FTEs at the fire captain position, which is already included in the proposed fiscal '26 budget. Financially, we are able to move this forward because Finance Committee has recommended increasing the paramedic transport fee. This is for ALS and BLS. If council moves that forward formally on June 16th, that would raise approximately $700,000 in fiscal '26. That would offset the $1.2 million of ongoing costs in this proposal. And so that's an important component of this strategy and this service level. And so Finance Committee Chair and other committee members are here. They can speak more to this. But I think in considering the wide options and the fiscal impact and the feedback from the community and the fire department, we have landed on this single role phased-in proposal for you to consider tonight. Next slide, please. So now let's jump into the nonprofit, whether it be the nonprofit partnership work plan or direct allocation. It's a busy table, but it speaks to quite a few items. So let me explain how this table works. We have the nonprofit partnership work plan phase one at the top. We have community events, which is the CSD grants that are for $5,000 or less. And below is direct allocations, which are general nonprofit partnership ongoing contracts for specific entities. The column reads as follows. Column one is what's already in the proposed budget that was published. Column two is the Finance Committee recommended monetary changes. Column three is the Finance Committee recommended allocations or reallocations. And column four is the total funding. So the proposed budget had $335,000. Finance Committee recommends an enhancement of 211,000. That would bring total funding to $546,000. I want to acknowledge some of this might have been gaps in the proposed budgets and there were omissions. So want to take a moment. So want to take a moment to acknowledge that. So now let's talk about the third column, which is the finance committee reallocation. Where we are to, as of today, is the proposal to directly allocate a hundred and fifty thousand to Magical Bridge, forty thousand to Third Thursday, forty-five thousand to U N A F, and eleven thousand to the Environmental Volunteers' Foothill Nature Preserve. What that would leave is a hundred thousand in the nonprofit partnership phase one work plan for P N S on June sixth, on June tenth to award or recommend for award. I want to also note that and clarify that P S N, Project Safety Net, does include a hundred thousand that was already in the proposed budget. It wasn't clearly delineated, but staff does want to confirm that. And so I think tonight, what would be important is if the council can clarify the dollar amount that P N S can work with as it will go into deliberation on June tenth and make some recommendation on grantee and award amounts. Would that be at the hundred thousand dollar level as presented before you or some other monetary level? To inform your decision or discussion tonight, we are wanting to summarize that as of the filing deadline last week, based on the NOFA, the Notice of Funding Award, we had nineteen applications totaling seven hundred and forty-seven thousand. In addition, we have three other applications that were just shy of that deadline, which totaled another seventy-three thousand. If we exclude the the direct allocations above delineated in the table, the applications remaining total four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. So I think again tonight, it would be good to clarify, if we can, the amount that P N S would work with going into June tenth deliberation. Next slide, please. The last major item, finance committee worked on last week related to gas utility rates. As you may recall, we had a proposed rate and the impact on the billing for median households that was redeliberated in April by finance committee and again on April, on May seventh. On May seventh, the committee recommended that we revise the fiscal twenty six rates to retain the current fiscal twenty-five rate structure with the rate increases to meet the revenue requirements for fiscal twenty-six in the gas utility. Specifically for fiscal twenty-six only, apply a combination of climate credit and interest income to G two customers. Those would be the small and medium meter capacities in a total amount of, that should be two point two million dollar credit. Previously, it was one point one, but staff reviewed that and to support the G two subclassifications, we would need two point two million dollars. And we also recommend that we return to U A C, the Utilities Advisory Commission, to further review the fiscal twenty-five COSA assumptions and the principles. So with that, may I have the next slide, please? Reminder of where we are. After tonight, we will bring the clarifications and the guidance from the full council back to finance committee next week on Tuesday, May twentieth. To wrap up the budget, that workshop starts at one P M. And then we will come back to full council on June sixteenth for budget adoption. Next slide, please. So tonight, myself, Paul Harper, Budget Manager, others participating virtually, department heads and O M B. We are here to answer any questions you might have based on the material we've presented or otherwise. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm inclined to go, obviously to public comment, but then directly to the dais unless there committee members that should speak in advance. Okay. Good.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, the committee did want to add its content. I want to commend the staff for a really great presentation in short timeframe and turnaround from Wednesday to now. And they're doing so short-staffed to boot. So it's really a yeoman's work that they've done. So just adding to some of the information that Lauren provided. We first, we really took on a lot of what we've heard from the council and concurred with ourselves that going into this coming fiscal year, already looking at using our uncertainty reserve and then having two follow-on years with projected deficits without an uncertainty reserve, compounded by the additional uncertainties that we have today, is a proposition that we were uncomfortable with. And so council member Rektal framed really a high-level goal of saying, let's try to achieve only utilizing half of that uncertainty reserve this year, so six million out of the twelve million, and be able to carry over at least six million more. I will note that we hope that we will also have a surplus at the end of this year because staff and the city manager have already explained to us and then in the finance committee that staff is already providing additional scrutiny on consultant contracts and on filling unauthorized but unfilled positions and to reduce those unfilled positions. And I just want to lay out for everybody what happens when we, when we don't fill positions. We have a certain, we budget for five percent unfilled, but a higher percentage of that is with, oh, and then we are currently at eight percent vacancies, but we're a higher percentage vacancy with, with public safety. And so, pardon me. Yeah, right now I'm talking about, about the general fund. And so what happens when we don't fill positions is that if we fill fewer than we expected, we come back with savings at the end of the year, except there's a certain amount of overtime. And in public safety, we tend to fill that savings with overtime. With other positions, we may have actual dollar savings as a result. However, in some cases, we have to contract out services like permitting and things like that if we have vacancies. So we don't get all of that savings back at the end of the year as surplus, but we get a portion of it. And so it's hopeful that we will see some additional savings there. Most years of the end of year, we've also projected conservatively on income. That's, we did so, but we've seen some fall off, particularly in sales taxes. And so staff, as they already provided to us and, and continue to project, we, we are not likely to see any additional surplus as a result of income exceeding projections. It'll be plus or minus, hopefully only a minor amount. It could come in below our projections even. So hopefully we will have a little bit more surplus at the end of the year. We currently have a formula that that surplus goes to our capital improvement plan and to our section one-one-five unfunded, our underfunded pension liabilities, and then we used a portion of it in recent years to build the uncertainty reserve. That will be, if we have some additional surplus, that will be a council decision on how to allocate that. And, but hopefully we'll have a little more room to maneuver in having a greater uncertainty reserve to deal with in the following two years. When we, we also have asked staff to look at, and it was in one of the slides, to look at authorized positions that are vacant and potentially should be eliminated from the org chart. One of the things that we, we ask for to kind of give a better sense of where do we stand as an organization right now and number of positions, we, we tend to look at a number of positions we've authorized and each year and say, well, that's, that's a metric. But really what we're looking at as an organization is how many people are actually on the payroll. Now their functions change over time. We put more positions in one area than another. So you can't have an exact apples-to-apples, but I think staff is working on a comparison of twenty nineteen. And so we get our first kind of pre-COVID baseline and compare it to today. And how many people do we actually have working for the organization to give us a little better sense of our staffing level to meet demands? We also have change in demand, so we can't say the demands that exist in twenty nineteen are what we're asking staff to do today. But it is an important point of reference that we don't usually look at. I did want to speak to the, the gas pricing that was mentioned at the end. This, Lauren, if I understand it right, that adjustment to prospectively two point two million from the cap and trade is new information tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then I saw in the note there that if a decision is made by January of twenty twenty-six on what COSA, Cost of Living Service Analysis, we should proceed with, then it would only be the one point one million. There's a lot of trepidation in the community amongst our committee on using cap and trade dollars to subsidize gas expenditures. But we, either way, we have some, because of the possibility of the new COSA, it would be really thirty-something percent increase on one kind of the, the smaller residential customers. That's a big deal and everybody, the, the U A C, the community, the, the committee are all struggling with this dilemma. So we, we want to take a harder look at that cost of living study because we had a prior one from the same company that was from five years ago that was quite different. And we want the U A C to really understand that and review it as well as staff reviewing it more. Lauren mentioned debt service. So we have a policy of not exceeding ten percent of our general fund income toward debt service. And I believe that right now we're about three point eight percent. So just over a third of our authorized level. We did not suggest and are not inclined to move us near our policy limit. But there's a lot of room in between those two numbers. And the one big capital improvement plan, program that we have on the horizon is Fire Station Four. And it's, I think, sixteen million dollars that's our share. And so having that in debt service would mean that we would be able to retain more of our capital improvement expenditures by having in the next several years more cash availability for that. So the ones that come out of pocket, we'd have more money for that. The ones that are larger and longer term would be done by debt service. Now, we already do that with the public safety building, the, the garages and other major projects. The golf course are done by debt financing. Interest rates are not as low as they were a few years ago, and that'll be a consideration because we got some screaming deals on, on interest rates in recent years. And then I did want to touch on, we had slide twelve. Maybe we can pull that back up. And Lauren went, it had, it's a really great table to help explain something that is hard to follow and we struggle with. As we went into the budget, one of the things that, first she mentioned that we said, well, where's Project Safety Net? We have this category on page two-twenty-four, which is general human service contracts. And these are a bunch of contracts for community partners that we pay, we fund annually. And whether it's Avenidas or Palo Alto Community Childcare and others. And we said, where's Project Safety Net? And it said, well, we pay it every year, a hundred thousand dollars is just not a line item. And we said, well, why wouldn't it be a line item? And there was actually, that category was there based upon who in the department administered it versus what they have in common on the categories. So as Lauren said, that's not a change in the budget. It's listed here, we just want to call it out as a line item because it's a commitment that we're all clearly making and an ongoing one. Then she mentioned the youth, youth collaborative initiative, Y C I. Is that the connectedness? Thank you. And that was the one that she mentioned was just simply an omission. It had been funded for five years and dropped off the budget because council three years ago said, well, we don't want this to come back every year. It's a three-year contract. That was the runway we saw. And when that contract ended with no implication from council that we intended to drop the program, it didn't show up in the budget.
And let's make of the point that that's youth community services, youth connect in this initiative.
That's right.
As the slide just says, Y C I. So for folks who don't know, that is a part of Y C S. And that's the organization that we have the longstanding.
That's right. And they have other funding for Y C S that is under HISREP. But this is a specific program that the county actually has partnered with and was really, these are leveraged dollars that we provide. And so that was put back in and staff said that was really an omission. But then we have this nonprofit partnership work plan, which we've struggled with. How do we get some greater rationality there? And what emerged was, okay, staff had proposed a dollar amount of initially two hundred and thirty-five thousand. That was corrected to two thirty-six. But that dollar amount was the exact amount of what we had allocated for those four different community partners last year. Project Safety Net, Magical Bridge, Third Thursday, and U N A F. And we created this new process and had all these and opened it up to everyone. And, and as a result, we, if we kept things on the path it was going, they'd be competing with nineteen other entities. And basically the implication is, oh, we're going to cut those four programs that we had specific funding for last year. So what the finance committee wants to ask the council to consider, and we are not making a specific recommendation, we just, we want to have the council feedback, is whether we should go ahead under, whether it be under the general human service contracts or some other place in the budget that we allocate the two hundred and forty-six thousand for those four entities in the budget, but create this new fund for nonprofit partnership programs that are not covered under the HISREP funding, plus fifty thousand for the community events grants and that that be what is open to all of those community nonprofits to apply for. So that's the proposal there in case that wasn't clear. And, and then lastly, on the, I think it's lastly, on the fire department staffing, we had a lot of consideration and some great input from the public and frankly, from the staff and the fire union and really settled on this single role, which is hiring a different category of uniform personnel. They are sworn personnel, right? Yep. Just want to make sure I got everything right. And initially that would be a 12-hour ambulance group, seven days a week during the busy ambulance period. And so that would allow us to not have, if, and Lauren, correct me if I, I get this wrong. It would mean that we wouldn't, in that period, we wouldn't have to use the cross-staffing necessarily. It would only be during the 12-hour, this lighter call period that would continue to be cross-staffing. Did I understand that correctly? That if we add?
There are two options. That would be one of the two.
Okay.
And the two options cost the same, but they provide different service.
Okay. All right. Thanks. So I think, yeah, sorry.
Chief Blackshire is on the meeting.
All right.
I want to see.
Maybe Chief can explain it even better.
I just want to confirm the question from Councilmember Burt.
It's really the implications of if we have the 12-hour single role initially, that would start in April of 2026 is the projected date. The implications of that on cross-staffing, we, a month ago or so, we are, no, it was actually a couple of months. City manager clarified or that, or we, we went forward as a council and city manager to add funding for Fire Station Four cross-staffing. And that was already going forward before this budget cycle. But with this change, is it correct that adding the 12-hour single role ambulance would mean that we don't need to have 24-hour cross-staffing? It would only be the 12-hour cross-staffing. Do I understand that correctly?
Good evening, Gio Blackshire from the Fire Department. So as Councilmember Rectal stated, it's just two ways to look at it that, that are options. So if the council's interest was to minimize the cross-staffing of Station Four, which was some of the concerns from the residents, there would be an option to not cross-staff the ambulance with the engine during the peak hours and have the 12-hour unit in service. That is not a change in service. The, the ultimate goal is to have that peak ambulance reduce the reliability on county ambulance coming into Palo Alto. That would give us a fourth ambulance during the peak hours. If we do it without cross-staffing at Station Four, that would not reduce our reliability on the county ambulance. So it's just a matter of, do we enhance the service and continue to cross-staff 24 hours? Or do we not cross-staff during the day and then in the evening we'll cross-staff while that 12-hour ambulance pretty much takes the call that normally the ambulance would take at Station Four? So it's a matter of, of, you know, the, the availability of that engine being a sole fire engine or enhancing the service, increasing our, our ambulance response in the, in the, in Palo Alto and in, and decreasing the response times when our, when our service areas impacted.
Thank you for that clarification. So I hope this, these additional comments are helpful. We're, we're throwing a number of things back at our colleagues and want to make sure that it was as clear as we could be, you know, got a, it may or may not yet be clear, but we wanted to try to explain it as well as we could for everybody and, and, and receive your feedback. Thanks.
Did any other committee members want to add or should we move along? Okay. Sure. Okay. Let's go to public comment then.
Our first speaker is Steve L.
Let me speak first as a resident. Thanks to Lauren and Ed and Pat and the committee, there's been a whole lot of progress since I went to the first finance committee meeting. And the second comment as a resident is that if I sit here, it feels like you got everything under control. Now let me switch and be an economist. When I went to the two committee hearings and I wrote you a letter, this budget and all of the great work that the committee did and the staff did is based on the staff's plausible cautious forecast. I think there's an equally plausible, probably more plausible forecast that has lower revenues, higher inflation, and higher interest rates. I've asked the staff, and I, I hope you'll follow up. A couple of the committee members mentioned it would be good to have an alternative forecast on the revenue and inflation side. Even before the administration policies, our city and our county has been losing jobs. And that's likely to continue. You know that the sales tax have plateaued, whether they declined slightly or not. I think there are other aspects of the revenue forecast that are in doubt. In 2007, housing sales dropped and we get a lot of revenue from the property tax from turnover. I think there's a really plausible case that inflation could be 4% or 5% or 6% as it has been previously. And that interest rates could stay high. Even if the Fed lowers short-term rates, the long-term rates have remained high and will go high with what people think about future inflation. So I hope in the June period, when you come back to the committee, we could look at an alternative forecast. And I hope in those great steps that you laid out in the summer for looking at alternative ways to save at cost, you would look at how the revenues and inflation and interest rates are going. Cause that's the economic fundamentals of the budget. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hamilton.
Sorry, I'm going to comment on the gas slide, but my comments are directly applicable to your study session. So sorry if I jumped the gun on that. You know, a lot of folks in the community really don't want to see cap and trade funds diverted away from their original purpose of permanently lowering greenhouse gases to subsidize gas use because it undermines city policies. We, you know, on Palo Alto neighborhoods, we don't think they should be used for that purpose. And we really appreciate the Finance Committee looking into this. But we, we don't agree with using cap and gas, cap and trade funds to give the small businesses a rebate. As Councilmember Rectal said on the Finance Committee, we should not be putting the cart before the horse and pre-assuming the new COSA is correct. And therefore, since we're just going to end up adopting the new COSA anyway, then give a, then give the credit to the small businesses. Cause I don't necessarily think that's going to be how it turns out. Also, the cap, using the cap and trade funds is outside the scope of the COSA and does not insulate the city from theoretical liability from changes to our COSA model. So it doesn't really achieve the purpose. I just, in general, when you have a large increase, like the proposed 34% increase for basic use on residential, any large increase, no matter which customer class will increase financial risk, liability, and uncertain regardless of who is affected. And staff really, especially because they have a monopoly, should avoid doing that. Basically, the proposed use of 2.2 million for this, to cover this mistake is essentially doubling down on a bad decision. And we really shouldn't do it. We should wait till the Utility Commission has had time to thoroughly vet this. And then once they come to their conclusion, we can determine how to proceed forward. Obviously, that's going to take a good part of, you know, part of this year, but we shouldn't jump the gun. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ustav G.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Ustav Gupta. While I currently serve as the Commissioner on the Utilities Advisory Commission, the views I'm expressing tonight are my own personal comments. First, thank you to the Finance Committee and staff for remanding the proposed gas COSA to the UAC for further review. Second, I urge you to preserve cap and trade funds exclusively for greenhouse gas reduction initiatives, not for millions of dollars of gas rebates. This aligns with prior city council resolutions, specifically Resolution 9487, which established these funds for greenhouse gas reduction projects before using them for rebates, and Resolution 10077, which stated the intention to use these revenues was for electrification. These climate rebates that are proposed are anything but. And using these funds to subsidize fossil fuels as proposed stands against these clear city policies. If the intent of the rebate is to address liability concerns, please note that our current COSA is valid and Prop 26 compliant. It's often drastic changes to rates, as seen in other cities, that invite litigation, not continuing with the valid existing framework. Furthermore, committing to rebates now prematurely assumes the proposed COSA's validity, which is still under review. Furthermore, the UAC has not had an opportunity to advise on the cap and trade policy as it has done in the past. Please send this issue to the USC as well for further review. So my recommendation is to direct staff to develop proposals for investing cap and trade funds exclusively in electrification and other greenhouse gas reducing projects, as our city policies clearly intend. And further, to seek the advice of the UAC pertaining to the use of the cap and trade funds. Gas rebates is a precedent Palo Alto has wisely refused to set before, and it's not one we should adopt now. Thank you for your service to our community and for your time.
That concludes public comment on study session item four.
All right. Unless there are any other comments from staff, we'll just go to begin comments from the, from the council. Councilmember Rectal.
Okay, first I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. First, the nonprofits, it was kind of awkward because Policy and Services have been looking at this. And then when we went into the, to allocate the money, we were confused about it. And so it kind of felt in some ways we're stepping on Policy and Services' toes. But we really wanted to be clear when we're allocating the money, and that's why we have this, this slide. And so I'd really be interested in the Policy and Services, what their thoughts are on the subject. The second comment is, Steve Levy, I think, is a really good suggestion. I'm sensitive to workload. So in a perfect world, I'd like to see that. I'm not sure if the staff has the bandwidth to, to do that. But if you do, I think there would be some added value to eventually see that. I have a couple of questions. One is, can you go to slide seven? I want to know about the assumptions about the revenue. We're projecting a deficit for fiscal year '27. I'm curious, is that consistent with the revenue that the long-term forecast have? Or have we tweaked that now that we've seen the changes in the tax collections?
So the question relates to fiscal '27. If we've changed any revenue assumptions since the proposed budget, the only change is the 700,000 related to the fee increases for fire transport fees of 700,000.
Okay. So we haven't changed sales tax projections at all?
No. So previously that was 9.6. We took it down by 2 million because 2 million is assumed to be ongoing savings.
Okay, very good. The other question, you, you talked about these placeholder savings. Can you add more color to that? How specific are you going to get? Are you going to say, we're, we're looking at these areas? Or are you just going to say, we're somehow going to find the money? We don't, we're not going to narrow it down right now, but there's, trust us, we'll find some money to save.
So we have the slide that delineates the framework for the alternatives for the savings. So I think this captures the deliberation from Finance Committee, which is look broadly for revenues, capitals, and general expenses. What we'll do on May 20th is indicate the ones that we can be very specific on. And then the placeholder, what we'll do is also propose, like of the placeholder that remains, how much is ongoing that remains, how much is one-time? Because Finance Committee directed and advised that it be a 4-2 split. So it's going to delineate how much remains that's one-time, that's a placeholder, how much is ongoing. Within the one-time, we're also going to try to kind of target how much may come from capital and otherwise. So we'll do our best to kind of target it for Finance Committee, but also need the grace and the time for us to look more closely and develop something that I think takes into consideration, I think, priorities, service impacts, and the current vacancies.
If I could add again, just, I think what Lauren just described reflects not a, trust us, we'll find the savings. It really reflects the time it will take to come back to the council with thoughtful recommendations on that, which is, is shown on one of your slides, slide nine, on proposed schedule, to come back to the Finance Committee in August and then to the full council following that.
Yeah, I was just curious how much, how much refinement you could do between then and now? And would be, how, how much? How could you narrow it down to give the people idea where we're cutting? Are we cutting positions? Are we cutting capital? That kind of thing.
I think it will take time for us to develop that. We will certainly give the two buckets and we will give what we can that can be identified by, you know, Thursday's memo. I mean, we're looking at very short turnarounds for these memos.
Oh, yeah.
And so I think prior to that or beyond that, it would be premature. And we do want to go through and look at capital and services and vacancies thoughtfully.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not implying that this is easy, but I just want to know. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lithgow-Hames.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Live, for your presentation and for all of your hard work and that of your team over the course of these many weeks. To the nonprofits, I want to echo what Councilmember Burt has said and Councilmember Rectal. I think we're all interested in adequately funding our excellent nonprofits. When I say adequately, I mean, to the extent of our means, based on our priorities. We want to be diligent and smart and thoughtful and fair. I know that our colleagues on PNS put together a format that they felt, I imagine, was transparent and fair and simple. And I do worry that we may have inadvertently mucked that up some on finance as we attempted to get at the same result, which is, you know, how do we allocate the dollars to cover the issues that we think matter most? And so I'm looking forward to a conversation, whether it's tonight or in the coming weeks, about that bigger picture on nonprofits. I remain a little confused about who's supposed to go the HISRAP route and who would go this other route. I know that there are people who, there are orgs that applied by the May 9th deadline and went both routes. And I think that's an example of the fact that we haven't yet arrived at a process that makes sense to those who are applying for these funds and reflects what we intended in allocating funds into these various buckets. So I'm, I'm excited for greater clarity and transparency on how nonprofits in our community are going to be supported by this city. Obviously, some, we have longstanding Obviously, some, we have longstanding partnerships with true partnerships. Um, I think Project Safety Net is in that category as an example. And there are some that are newish, but also seem to be doing the work of the city, like a Third Thursday, which is different than a nonprofit that might be, you know, doing something different out of the community where we are glad they do it, but it doesn't feel like an extension of the city. And I think those are some of the ways we need to be thinking about which organizations go in which category. I don't have the answers, but I'm definitely interested in us asking the question.
Councilmember Lou.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the city staff and, uh, Chief Finance Official Lay for the incredible amount of work. I think several of my questions have been mostly answered, but I'll, uh, start with those and maybe go to comments if I have time. Uh, regarding the public comment about, uh, remanding the COSA to the UAC, is there a reason why we can't also have this rebate conversation later or refer that to the UAC?
Sure. Let me ask Assistant City Manager Nozai to see if she'd like to respond, uh, first off. But let me, uh, take a, a shot at the high-level, uh, perspective from staff, which is that the recommendation of using the climate credit to, um, uh, provide that rate relief was really a reflection of where we are, uh, having completed the COSA and trying to, uh, develop a, um, a relatively smooth transition for all users. So, in effect, if the entire packet were to be, uh, remanded to the UAC, it would effectively eliminate, uh, the, the attempt to use the credit accordingly.
Uh, City Manager Chicago actually nailed it, so I don't have anything to add unless the council has any additional questions.
So, it would, what do you mean it would eliminate the attempt to use that, uh, rebate? Couldn't we decide this rebate mid-year or just at any point?
Oh, I, I see. So, it, it might be a rebate issued to the same customer class that was recommended, but to do so retrospectively, uh, rather than, uh, immediately. I suppose that, that is something that, uh, we could consider and, and provide some recommendation to the council on. But again, it was in order to, uh, reflect the, the level of rate relief that that customer class was expecting to receive under the new COSA.
Right. Just a brief comment, I realize that it's a large percentage increase in absolute numbers, but in total numbers, it, uh, might not be large for any particular customer, for any particular bill. I would love a way to discuss the rebate more, think about maybe means testing it, uh, for single, for, uh, fixed income renters, for example, and otherwise, uh, reducing the subsidy on gas as much as possible. So, I would actually want to defer, uh, consideration of the rebate until we have, uh, a clearer picture of what the cost increases will actually be. But, uh, sorry, just getting a bit of myself, and that was really, I think, my main question on utilities. Thank you. On the Finance Committee, I think, uh, Councilmember Burt spoke about looking at measure K dollars that we spend on transportation and looking at measure B funding that we might get from VTA and things like that. I just want to confirm that is in the bucket of, uh, of potential savings that'll come back in August, right?
Yes.
Okay. On single-role, uh, staffing, I understand the costs for this year, or for the coming year in 2027. Do we have any projection of long-term savings or other staffing changes that we'd actually make in response to having that and expanding that?
Can you clarify the question and also Chief Blackshire would need to answer?
If we have, uh, single-role paramedic coverage, that is ostensibly less expensive, uh, per person, per hour of service. And in the medium term, we would actually expect savings. And I think even the, uh, firefighters' union sent a letter to the fact saying that in the long term, this is the budget-sensitive, uh, way to get more savings. And so, I see that we have some new costs from this, but I don't know if the savings were discussed.
Let me take a, a first shot at that, Chief, and, and feel free to, to amplify or redirect as you see fit. What is proposed, well, it really does reflect the bottom line in terms of the cost relative to your proposed budget. And to your point, it, there is a savings, or we anticipate there will be a savings relative to the alternative, which might be firefighters, uh, staffing, uh, any additional ambulance and, and other apparatus. So, your, your point is accurate that we're not reflecting a savings, but the rationale is it, it's really dependent on the base. And again, we're, we're working off of the base budget and, and showing the relative cost from there. To your, uh, I think, larger point on how the single role has the, the potential and, and the part of the rationale is to generate that savings, the recommendation that you have, uh, before you is really, uh, a somewhat a, a very prudent step toward that rollout by allowing the department to establish this new division, to put in place the administrative infrastructure necessary to support the single role, and then to, uh, actually use this first unit as the proof of concept. Also allows us to, uh, address the CalPERS issues on how, uh, retirement, uh, would be, uh, defined for that, uh, new classification. So, it allows us to get through the administrative steps, get the administrative infrastructure in place, and, uh, roll out the first unit. So, uh, again, I think it's, it's the, uh, the prudent first phase of a larger rollout.
Sure, I understand for Station 4 that, um, uh, that due to the change in service that we're not going to get savings, but, um, it's just good to explicitly confirm that there are no other plans to expand this or other plans to identify savings, um, over the next few years at this point until Station 4 is set up. And I guess we understand the impacts of the program.
Uh, Chief, you could confirm this, but I, I would say the future expansion of the single-role model is really not dependent on Station 4. It, it is really more dependent on the effectiveness of that model and ultimately, our, our financial ability to expand it, uh, beyond, Chief?
Yeah, that's correct. Without being wordy, you, you explained it quite well. It's not necessarily tied to Station 4, as it is just to add, um, you know, how we distribute our resources. As, uh, as Chicago said, um, doing civilians instead of, um, sworn firefighters is, is just a different model. So, that's, that's it. And it would bring in additional revenue, having that fourth ambulance and allowing us to transport more patients does bring in additional revenue as well.
Thank you, and one last question just to squeeze in. In the August timeframe, will there be any, uh, efforts to identify revenue opportunities, either in the economic development front or changing other fees like golf or airports or things like that?
Um, we will be looking at revenues to see whatever areas we can enhance. Nothing specific comes to mind at this time. And also, as it relates to fees, we have done several updates, but we will look and as more opportunities present themselves over the course leading up to, than August 19th, well, we will put them before Finance Committee for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Baker.
Thank you. I also want to add my thanks to staff for, uh, the tight turnaround and the, uh, really helpful, um, presentation of the information, uh, in that tight timeline. And I have to admit that I empathize with you particularly because, um, you know, for, I think there's two of us on this dais, uh, this, there's three of us, uh, four of us who weren't in the, the meeting, but, uh, two of us who are also here on the dais like, an hour after the new information came out. So, we're really having to digest it on the fly here, um, so I'll do the best I can. I do appreciate, uh, what Mr. Levy said in public comment. It's, uh, you know, I had raised a lot of, of those concerns last week, and, um, I'm trying to follow the, uh, the timeline and the, uh, placeholder savings and reviewing those specific remaining budget savings in August and approving them in September. And, um, so, is, is that generally to see if we can maintain those placeholder savings without accessing that $6 million that we're, instead of using all 12, we're only going to use six? Is, is that the idea for that, or tell me a little more about that proposed schedule and its purpose?
Sure. So, the 12 versus the six. So, uh, the proposed budget as published included using 12 million of uncertainty reserve. Finance Committee has recommended using half of it. So, in order to achieve that, we would need to come back with $6 million of either new revenues and/or reduction in cost.
Oh, so that's not in this budget. So, right now, we're 6 million over?
We'd need to find 6 million, yes. So, so by, uh,
I thought that was done, I see.
Correct, so we need time to develop that. And I think there are some things we probably identify over the next several days, um, as a reduction of that 6 million. Then, the balance of the 6 million, whatever that number is, will be a placeholder in the adopted budget. You will formally adopt a budget that would not appropriate that $6 million legislatively. Then, staff would bring back, um, more details on revenues, capital projects, and/or other expenses to, um, be more specific on that level of savings.
And how to meet what had been adopted, which is 6 million shy. Okay, that's super helpful. I'm, I'm now tracking what you're saying. But I am a little concerned, given the, um, economic environment we're experiencing, where I'd kind of hoped it'd gone the other way. And so, I, I don't know what our backup plan is, but, um, at, if we're going to be reviewing these things in August and September, I assume that's a time where if things are going south, you know, around us and revenue is worse than we think even, that we won't want to, but we could make appropriate adjustments in the budget at that point.
Uh, you mean further than the sixes?
Oh, yeah, because I'm worried we may have to.
Yes, and, and so, I think importantly for, um, ourselves should be reminded the adopted budget is a point in time.
Yeah.
And throughout the year, we make budget adjustments either informally, because we have a CMR before you, formally, um, during the mid-year process. But the adopted budget is a point in time, and it is an important legislative process where you legally appropriate the spending level for us to administer. But certainly, as we continue to monitor the situation and as we come back, we will give you any updates on anything new that we may feel is material to the discussion and the deliberation about our financial position.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I, I do trust, and I certainly saw last year on Finance, that staff does keep a close eye on this and watches it. I'm just afraid that you're, what, what you may see is worse than we hope. And I don't know that we're thinking a lot about that bad-case scenario, so I'll, I'll set it aside for now, but that, that's what I'm really getting at.
Vice Mayor, if I might, I, I believe, if memory serves, we did something very similar during COVID. And so, to your point, we do track, we will track, and, and to the extent if, if the $6 million target, uh, is something that we find in that August timeframe that needs to be increased, I think we will be able to accommodate that in that, uh, in that cycle.
Great, thank you. That, that's what I was looking for. Okay, thank you. Question about the gas rates. You know, we're, we're tossing around this, uh, I guess, 32% number for the certain class. Is that 32% of the entire rate, the entire bill, or is that just a portion of their bill? Or what's, what's going on for those folks who are affected?
I'm wondering if Assistant City Manager Nozai can help or a utility team member can help? And then, Vice Mayor, can you restate your question?
Well, I'm trying to understand, is it truly if I used to have a bill of, you know, 60 bucks, is it going to be, um, 80 bucks? Or is it that it's part of that 60 increases by 32%? That's what I want to know.
Let's see, I believe our Assistant City Manager is not here at the moment. If, uh, we've got additional utility staff, you can chime in. If not, why don't we keep going and we'll come back to that question?
Question.
Okay, that's fine, sure. Well, actually, what would be helpful is, um, get back to that slide. Could, could you just define exactly what our G2 customers? That would be helpful, too. I mean, I hear, see here, small and medium meter capacities, but who are they?
Maybe if you have a few more utilities questions, if you could come back to that.
I, I know that G1 is residential, G2 is small multifamily and small to medium-sized businesses. And then, it has a quite a wide range, because the smaller to medium businesses at some point become medium to large, and the large ones are what are in G3.
Got it, okay, thank you. That's, that's helpful. Okay, and I, I just, uh, while we're still generally on this topic, uh, so I, 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 I see this proposal to send the CASA to UAC, I guess. I, I haven't personally looked at either the old CASA or the new CASA. But, uh, there was a public commenter who said that continuing with a valid CASA would not open us up to any liability. I, I don't know, just personally, as a longtime litigator, maybe that's true if, if we didn't have something more recent, but we do, and I haven't reviewed either, so I have no idea if it's good or bad or not. But if someone thought it was helpful and wanted to use it, you can use it. So, I just think we need to not think, not look at things under that lens. And then, I'm, I'm just kind of confused. So, on this climate credit that's referenced on this gas slide, is that better discussed with the next action item? Or, I mean, because that's, I think, where we drill down into that. I mean, I understand that it's a component of this, but I sort of feel like cart, horse, horse, cart. Yeah, slide 13.
Your slide 13?
Those are my utilities.
We've got some folks here now ready to ask. I think you had three questions, Vice Mayor.
Oh, probably, yeah. The, the first, I think, was, uh, fairly simple, which is just, uh, when we talk about this increase for the, uh, for, uh, in the new CASA of 30-whatever percent, is that 30% of the whole bill that a util, uh, that a rate payer would pay in that month? Or would it be 32% of some portion of their gas bill?
Sure, so actually, the 2025 COSA, as the UAC had reviewed it, reflected, sorry, let me pause, Kylie Nozai, Assistant City Manager and Interim Utilities Director, apologies. The 2025 Cost of Service Analysis that the UAC reviewed reflected, uh, 22% overall increase to the residential median bill, basically. Um, and so, that was the kind of core cost. And then, when the UAC at that point recommended a climate credit that, to the residential customers, that would have brought the bill down to about 13% year-over-year impact. That's essentially kind of getting to the same point that the Finance Committee recommended in just a slightly different way. The Finance Committee recommended that you maintain the current rate structure. We would need to increase rates about 10%, 9 or 10% for all customers. For the median residential bill, that's probably about a 5% increase, if I was trying to compare apples to apples. But instead of giving, um, the G1 or residential customers a climate credit, it would give the G2 smaller users, uh, climate credit. Um, and that's, the small users are, your small and medium users are customers that are basically anywhere between a meter size that's frankly the same as some of your residential customers up into that medium classification. Uh, and that larger customers, uh, wouldn't be included in that climate credit.
I think you got it right, colleague. But, so does anybody have a 32% increase?
There are rate increases, uh, throughout that. There are rate increases throughout that cost of service that would reflect that number. But when staff does the overall bill analysis, it was 22%. 22.
That's for everybody?
No, that's for the G1, so residential.
Okay, I got, okay, thank you. So that does answer my question. All right, thank you. There could be the range within that. So that's the mean. Got it. Okay.
And simply to give a complete answer, because there's a component of, I'll get the terminology wrong, but there's the fixed cost and the variable costs associated with usage. And so to your point, I think the percentage increase reflects one of those factors. But then when aggregated, it is that 22%.
Correct. And City Manager Chikada's point, that there's those individual rate increases and then there's what it does to the total bill. So there's a lot of percentages out there.
Right, right. That's, 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 that's what I suspected was that it was complicated like that and had the various factors and components that add up and you can't just pick one. So, okay. And then the climate credit, is that like a flat thing per customer and not usage based?
Correct. It cannot be volumetric.
I'm saying that's what non-volumetric means is that it's just a flat thing for any rate payer that you've discerned to give it to.
Correct.
Okay. I have a couple more things, but I've been going for a while, so I can stop and hold on the others if you'd like.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you. Fortunately, most of my questions have been answered by now. I have one remaining. First, thanks to staff for turning this around and, and to the Finance Committee. I know last week was a very long week for you and thank you. I think we're in a much better place now. So my one concern I had looking through the updated fees section was there were, it looked like there were two deleted fees, both related to Palo Alto Link. And those were on like one-way fare and discounted fares being deleted from Palo Alto Link. I just wanted to make sure that that would not remove the free rides for youth seeking mental health services through Palo Alto Link?
We have a staff from Office of Transportation, either Rippon or Nathan can comment to confirm. And please let us know if you need the question repeated.
Hi, good evening. Those youth fares cover, those, that subsidy covered the fares that the youth themselves would have covered. So it's a fairly, you know, while important and useful to the youth, it's only one or $2 for each youth utilized. And I don't, I believe it was that came out of the CSD budget. And I don't think they had, I think they're considering, or I think even in the current budget proposal, they're likely going to renew that, that subsidy of that affair that the youth themselves would, would pay in circumstances for these trips. So it's, it's not that much, but I'll let Kristin weigh in on that.
Thank you, Nathan. This is Kristin Alcain, Community Services Director. So that's correct. We're intending on continuing that free link ride program and it's funded through our youth mental health funding.
Great. Thanks for confirming.
Okay, I have a number of comments on various pieces of paper and also by definition, we didn't have this very long. But as I go through this, first of all, kudos to the Finance Committee. They were listening to us and are getting this thing down, so I think that's the right direction. Mr. Chikada did say that what he's going to come back, he's going to come back to tell us how much of the six that, that he could find. But as we sort of talked about over here with the Vice Mayor's comments, at some point in time, this, this body just has to decide what the budget is. And if he can't find it, then we'll say, okay, it's not six, it's eight and we got to find it. So that's all still on the table. I just want that for the, for the public to understand as well. I really appreciate the priorities to achieve project prioritization on page 10. So we're using very good guidelines there. I really appreciate that judgment as opposed to just going in and whack, whack, whack. So that gives us good guidelines and I love the sort of contingency planning at three different levels, which is what we discussed in the, the last meetings. I think that's quite on the, the right track. In the fire and ambulance slide, I think that if the Chief Blackshire is still on, we know that it's about 60 some percent of the calls are for, to roll an ambulance. And I believe 1.5% on fire. Is that correct, Chief?
That is correct. Actually, it's, well, I mean, we're talking small percentages in regards to fire, but it's approximately 63% emergency medical services and about 1% in fire.
And on the 1% in fire, what does that translate to in our city in terms of fires per year?
So when you say
Actual, actual, not calls, is what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah. So are we referring to like structure? I mean, the fire call can be everything from vehicle fire to structure fire to dumpster fire. So, so we've had, so if you look at our report, it's going to say, I believe, and again, I don't have the report in front of me, but it's about 87 fires a year. Again, that, that range is, that's a range of different fires. And we can narrow that down to the type of fire. But if you're saying how many fires a year, we're looking at 87 for that particular call type.
For the whole population in all the areas.
That's correct.
Yeah. And I think ambulance is in some, some numbers of thousands that I can't recall.
Yes, that's correct. I could pull the numbers up if you'd like, but yes, it's definitely in the thousands.
Yeah. So I think by, by any definition, and we saw that last year on the Finance Committee when I was a member there, investing in ambulance coverage, particularly if we're moving away from county, which is slower. By definition, that's spending our money that's going to give you more safety than, than anything else because of the number of calls and the life-threatening nature of some of the folks that take those ambulances. So I, I think this is the right approach to take on the, on the single roll and adding some expense there. Because, and I would emphasize that we should do it to replace the county calls because we're trying to get it to be faster and better coverage. And that's not what the county gives us. So that's the, the alternative that I would support in that regard.
That's correct. We're, we're projected to run approximately 10,100 calls this year. So 63% of that would be emergency medical calls. So looking at about 6,300 calls.
Yeah, great, great. Thanks for being right on top of those statistics. The, the whole issue with the gas rates, we've been talking about this now. Well, UAC, we've been talking about it all year. But we, we just got to do, we have to do something here to keep these rates under control, given the realities of situation, the cost of the service and the maintenance that we have to do. So that's why everyone's been looking at all kinds of options, like, like the, the credit that, you know, is not coming out of the best place. If it's coming out of an area that we've been preserving for electrification and instead it's just cash rebate, but we just got to get those things down. But as our Assistant City Manager said, and Acting Utilities Director, we really should focus on the dollars it's costing, not the percentages. The percentages get a lot of press. But it's how much more is it going to cost? And it is our job to really try to keep those, those numbers down. So as we work through this, we, we shouldn't, I don't think we should take our, I hate to use the word gas pedal in my comments here, but we don't want to take our foot off the electrical accelerator while we're looking for ways to reduce all utilities costs. But the biggest problem right now in terms of what we're trying to manage is the, is gas. So I appreciate you looking at that. But it's sort of what are the year, year-over-year dollar costs in the mean that I think we should focus on to really give some, some relief and some gradual buildup to our customers? We all know, well, we all know, but we like to forget that we were really at almost zero in the pandemic for obvious reasons and that dug a hole. And so we're crawling back from that and hope the public understands that. Still, the jumps from year to year are pretty, are pretty enormous for any level of home. So I think we should, or apartments. So I think we should keep working on that. And even things like I've spoken before about, you know, is it the right level of utility reserves in all of the reserves? Or is there any room there? So I presume you're looking at that as well, so that we're not over-reserved when we look at all of the reserves collectively. A little troubled by the COSA because we've just done a service study. And now we're saying, just kidding, we're going to wait another year. So that's published and it's public. So I agree with the Vice Mayor. I think there's some potential issues there. Do you have any examples yet of, nothing's low hanging fruit at this point, but CIPs that you might look at to delay? So we have just some feel of what might, might be pushed. I saw, I saw a good one was, you know, bathrooms at the nature preserve, things like that.
I believe Public Works Director Brad. Eagleson.
Good evening, Council. Brad Eagleson, Director of Public Works. We really don't. We were talking about that framework for prioritization. We're just starting to think about it. We've got a lunchtime meeting tomorrow, actually, to start digging into this topic.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't expect you to have that. I thought you might just have some, some hints. I know you'll come up with a list. Don't worry.
And to your point, Mayor, just for the record, don't want the folks at the nature preserve getting too excited because that was used as an example of something we would not want to defer because the, the existing infrastructure is not in good shape.
Then that's a good, that's an excellent example to have put there. It's something that needs to be analyzed, not just, oh, we can save a few bucks this year on that. We want to look at the downsides as well, which you're obviously saying in here you're going to do. And I, and I salute that, that you're not just cutting. I want to go back to the slide 12. I mean, I think overall, and I watched the, a lot of the Finance Committee meetings in this part, you folks were talking about basically getting sort of categories of the types of, whatever you want to call them, grants or partnerships and so on. And as I read this now, correct me if I'm wrong, to the Finance Committee, you have sort of a basic structure for what we would call long, long-term repetitive grants that are our partners. And then you have a different category, I'm not sure what you would call it, but sort of other allocations. So is that where you basically ended up with the two categories? Okay. And, you know, basically the Finance Committee can pick any number they think is reasonable here and that we have to evaluate it. And that can come bottoms up with this sort of has, or it can come top down of this is how much we can afford in a, in a given year. I don't quite understand the, just didn't understand the math on the last point at the bottom there about the applications, the 747. How does that relate to what's already on the table there?
Sure. So of the applications we received as of the deadline, we have 719 of them and that totals 747,000. In addition, we have three applications totaling 73,000 that are slightly shy of that deadline. Now, if we deduct the direct allocation proposed in the table above for those nonprofits, some of those nonprofits were amongst the 19 applicants.
What do you call direct applications here on the chart?
The direct allocations. So
What number?
Magical Bridge, Third Thursday, UNEF. Some of these nonprofits are within those 19 applications.
So that's the 246.
246, yes.
Yep.
Yeah. So that's the 246.
Yep. And so when we deduct that, what remains excluding those direct allocations, the value of the applications is 451,000.
And that compares to?
100,000 in the table. So based on Finance Committee recommendation, what would remain for PNS going into looking at the applications is $100,000 to award for the net value being asked of 451,000.
Great. That's what I was trying to tie together. Thank you. And then there's this 50,000 for community CSD grants as well.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So there's some comment from Council that, you know, we, we don't like folks to have to compete for the money, but that's a just a by definition thing. That's always going to happen because we don't have unlimited funds. We can't just say, here's the purse, what do you need? So there is going to be competition. In this case, we're saying, again, just for clarity, that there's an ask of 451 and this budget is, is 100. Plus the 50 in parentheses. And then the items in Magical Bridge that I understand, Magical Bridge on down, did I understand that that was last year's allocation?
That's correct.
Okay, so that it wasn't this year's ask? We didn't go back to those folks and say, what do you need this year?
Well, as it happens, each one of the organizations did put an application in for the nonprofit partnership work plan. So
Oh, are these numbers?
Pretty close, if not exactly the numbers.
Okay, good. That clarifies one of my other questions there. All right. That's all I have to do on that one. I'm still back on my question of, while I appreciate the direction we're going and cutting maybe 6 million, there are certain things that we might still need to have plug numbers for. Councilmember Stone mentioned one last meeting and I, I mentioned one in terms of the code enforcement that we have to do something on in the next year. Unless this body decides that we're going to keep that, our 300 number as is and give the services as is, we're going to have to spend some money on it. So I think it's short sighted not to put plug numbers in for that. So don't know where that is, if you pick up that at the next meeting or if the Finance Committee is recommending no plug numbers. Can anybody comment on that?
I believe there were no other plug numbers, placeholder numbers, other than what is shown on the various slides here.
Okay.
We didn't discuss that at all.
Okay, so I would not change my request that in this new analysis of what we need to do and where we need to spend money, that something like those two examples have to be included for evaluation as to whether or not we want to spend money on them. And those are just the two that I mentioned. There may be more. And then also last, as last time about the consultants report. And I think you said it was both contractors as well as consultants. So I don't know if that's got any visibility now. Can, can we get that with some explanation?
There are a couple of pieces to this. One is a report that was given to the Finance, Finance Committee as and at places, I can't remember what title it was, an initial report on the Tuesday of last week meeting. And that did include both contractors as well as, well, it's, it's a variety of contracts, including services as well as construction services all that exceeded $1 million over the last few years. So that's one piece. A second piece that is in progress is the unrelated to the budget, really. The Policy and Services Committee will get a report on the consultant review, consultant services review later this month.
Okay, I have no pre-assumptions on what that is. I just think it's very good data that we talked about in last year's Finance Committee, just to see how that's allocated and what kind of consultants are out there and so on. Okay, I see other lights now. Councilmember Lou?
Okay, I'm happy to go for it. So just for some comments with some questions probably sprinkled in. I'm a big fan of the framing to reduce the Uncertainty Reserve contribution by $6 million. I think, you know, when we talk about plug numbers, that is ultimately the best plug number we can really do. And it gives us a lot of flexibility for thinking about like, you know, maybe officially declaring a plug number later. On the nonprofit funding, I would definitely hesitate to give direct allocations to some of the groups like Magic, well, really the four groups that are on that third column. I mainly say that because I don't understand exactly what they asked for, for this year. I don't understand, you know, their previous asks, maybe they, maybe UNAF wanted $20,000 for a fancy projector and they don't need to make that purchase again this year. Like, I just don't understand. And I would hesitate to, at this point, kind of commit to that funding unless there's really council consensus. I also am not sure if Neighbors Abroad belongs in this list. I recall in, or I was looking through old notes and I think Neighbors Abroad was also previously listed in the same set of in the same set of, uh, nonprofit allocations as the Magical Bridge and Third Thursday funding. So I'm not sure if that's an admission or just, uh, a different bucket.
If you like clarification on that, I'll take a first crack at it. Neighbors Abroad does, well, let me first point out, you are highlighting the intent of the nonprofit work plan phase one and future phases to really try to rationalize what has historically been a number of disparate, really one-off, uh, decisions. And so case in point, Neighbors Abroad is an ongoing, a relationship funded largely through the city manager's office budget. I think a few years ago, there was a council direction to, to fund it accordingly. And I believe we also have an application from Neighbors Abroad through this work plan for a, a particular, uh, additional, uh, request. So really fits in both buckets.
Okay, uh, I, I think we should take this to policy and services and then have a holistic view for the full council when we actually, uh, uh, kind of clarify our budget. And, uh, would want to make that decision, um, through policy and services, yes. On gas rebates, I already kind of made my point there. I agree on remaining the COSA to the UAC. I would also, uh, strongly pitch that we defer our decision about the rebate. Uh, the actual cost increase by my back in the envelope math is around $15 per month on the average bill. That will be, of course, much higher for some people. And that is a meaningful amount of money for some people and not for others. And I would not like us to take the time to think about whether we can have any filters or like means testing or other, uh, um, measures so that we subsidize gas as little as possible. On the overall, uh, CIP prioritization thread, I like the rubric that we already proposed for, uh, for prioritization, but I would also add that we should really prioritize safety. So there are some, uh, infrastructure and in my mind particularly traffic safety improvements. Um, and I think safety should be a parameter like, uh, in that blue box. I also think we should try to prioritize projects that we think will ultimately happen, for lack of a better phrasing. This kind of goes back to my comment last week. We have funding for, uh, Churchill and Palo Alto Ave grade separations. It's not clear how much of that is in actual grade separation versus quiet zones or other safety improvements. I think, uh, taking stock of whether we want to use our measure B dollars and, you know, our proportional kind of city contribution on Palo Alto Ave proper grade crossings is, uh, is actually likely to happen and therefore likely to, or, or therefore worthy of, uh, our revenues. And otherwise, I, uh, think the finance committee, uh, recommend.
I wanted to address, uh, Councilmember Lou's, um, um, organizations. It is all continuing the programming that they have been performing. So in the example of Magical Bridge, uh, when we approved that last year, it was the program, programming for, uh, uh, disabled community members. And it's, I think, 46 different programs they do with that. The UNAF is our share for their programming, multiple programming, uh, both, um, the annual documentary film festival and I think other programming. The Third Thursday, it is the city contribution to those things. So reducing those would mean that those programs would be reduced. It's, and, um, so if that's what the council chose to do, then that would be the action, but that's the outcome. It's not ambiguous about that. I did want to, uh, briefly address, uh, the, um, issue of the, uh, discussion we briefly had about funding for Jeb Foundation on youth mental health. Really, uh, I don't know whether to call it a gap analysis, but, uh, that's certainly part of what they would do. It was something that we talked about briefly in, in the meeting, uh, meetings of the finance committee and is something that we realize is still on the table and unresolved. And we didn't have a council direction on that, but it, it's certainly something that, um, is, uh, we'd like to get feedback. It is something that the council could elect to say, we simply want to fund it. What was, and I recall now, one of the things that was different is it's a one-time expense, whereas these others are ongoing. So it didn't fit in that same category of general human service contracts that are ongoing, but it would be a human service contract, it would be one time. And so that's very much something for the council to, uh, wade in on. And then I did want to discuss this kind of other issue of if things get worse, uh, and an option too. And, uh, one of the things that I spoke about earlier is if we went to a debt financing on Fire Station Four or maybe that and some other capital, uh, improvement plans, the potential would be that we would be able to either sustain more capital programs or with the reductions that we are looking at in these scenarios, uh, at the end of the year, a budget less of a, uh, general fund transfer to the capital program because the cash flow would be there, uh, to continue the capital programs from the debt finance. And so that's another mechanism, another big knob that we could turn, um, either, either way. And certainly if things got, or I shouldn't say certainly, but more prospectively, if things turn worse in the budget. So I just want to share those things.
Councilman Baker?
Yeah, thank you. So actually just quickly, uh, on that, is, is there any placeholder for the Jeb Foundation in the budget right now? I'm just looking at a no. Staff, no?
There is not.
Okay, just curious, okay.
Again, if I could just give a perspective on that, I think that we do have, uh, youth mental health funding that is within the, uh, CSD budget. So it's not specific to Jeb, but, uh, would provide some capacity depending on where the, the dollars, uh, ultimately land. But I think in, as an order of magnitude, we're, we're already anticipating needing to accommodate that.
Oh, okay. So it's just a couple of general comments and then some specific, uh, questions and perhaps comments. So, uh, it's been some talk about, you know, when this came to PNS and the process we set up there. And I just want to say, when that came to our committee, at least my understanding of the assignment was to really set up a process. Not so much to define to whom it applies. There was a general sense of to whom it applies, but I think there was some sense that that would get further refined and I think we're still struggling mightily with that. And so I will come back to that, but what we were really focused on was, you know, we were getting last year, certain ad hoc requests here and there for dollars and we did not have a process to which we could refer people and say, look, instead of showing up in, you know, August or whenever with X dollars, like this is how we do it. And our, our auditor had also encouraged us to adopt a process that was systematic and, and by which we could compare and contrast and try to figure out how to be best stewards of our dollars. And, um, so that's what we endeavored to do is to say, what would we want to know? What do we need to know? Uh, how, how, how do we, uh, sort through this in a way that's transparent? And we don't have just a few folks who know the secret handshake and others who get overlooked? And how do we discover newcomers who might have some really terrific services to offer? But how do we take care of our old friends and partners? So it was really trying to, to get more of the process. So I don't feel any, uh, I really appreciate my colleagues worrying about my toes, but they do not feel stepped on. Thank you, uh, because it was really focused on more of the how. But today we have to deal with the who. And that is harder. And, um, you know, there's, there's, uh, I understand there are nonprofit partners who really are partners, either spun out from us in one way or another. They're doing services that the city might otherwise feel compelled to provide. And, um, a, and so it's, then there are others whom we love and are doing great things for the city, but perhaps are falling a, a different type of bucket, some of that. So here we're looking at PNS, uh, the nonprofit partnerships process versus this, in the budget process versus his rap. So there's, there's lots of, of sources. But, um, you know, I, I think that we should be sort of trying to get a real consensus on our categories. And I think it's really hard because there is sort of this continuum. I mean, neighbors abroad, as you just mentioned, it kind of falls in both, where do you put it? You know, we might have seven different opinions on that up here. But right now, looking at, um, slide 12, um, there's, so in, in essence, I think what we're doing is adding basically, um, but $211,000 to the nonprofit, um, proposal from the original budget. And, um, I guess what I'm curious about is what, uh, the mayor was, uh, asking some questions about. So we received these 19 applications and I understand that, um, some of them, I don't know if it's four or how many, uh, are identified here in the direct allocations, but we have, um, what, 14, uh, entities? And since we've mentioned neighbors abroad, including neighbors abroad, uh, that are going to be, um, fighting over, uh, what, $100,000, right? And, um, and last year, neighbors abroad got what, 30 or 40, something like that? So like this is going to be rough, folks. And, uh, I think we need to recognize that. And it, you know, when you just glance at this at first, it looks like, well, some folks have gotten their allocations, you know, through this process in ways that I know, I respect, Councilmember Burt said about many of them, but I still have some questions. So for example, when we look at, and I don't know if you have had the opportunity, because I think it came in after finance committee meetings last week, but those 19 folks, I'm just, and, and the three who were late, I don't know if they had good reasons. I know I've also heard feedback that not everyone got the memo. And some of the people, uh, that, that we, we need to think hard about how we got the word out about this. But even if we will talk about the 19, were those reviewed to see if any of them fall in similar categories to the direct allocations shown on this slide? Um, have they been previously funded? Do any of them provide services that we would need to provide if they didn't? So I'm just curious what.
Good questions. At this point, we have not reviewed with that screen. To your point, just to be clear, they came in Friday at 3:00 PM. So there really hasn't been an opportunity for substantive review.
Yeah, and so I guess my point is I don't know if there's apples and oranges. I don't, I don't know that any of us know. And so they're being put in a bucket and, um, you know, when I, I, it's, it's so hard because we love all these folks. But, you know, I, I, you know, I'm a big climate environmental person. But I look at environmental volunteers, I look at UNAF, I look at Third Thursday. They strike me as different than Project Safety Net and, and, uh, the YCI program. And so I, you know, and I, I realize they're being treated somewhat differently here, but they're already getting their allocations. So I guess to me, since we did a lot of unknowns here, I would be interested in taking the ones in that third column and putting them back into the overall process because we can't draw these clear lines very easily. And, um, and putting that money that's been allocated back in there and just looking at all of them. They, they may well get exactly what's here when we're done with the process. But if, if that, you know, if, because you are forced to operate without the benefit of their current asks, and we don't know about the others in the bucket. I mean, we, we do have $6 million that we're, you know, we're, we're taking out of our, uh, the 12 million we were going to use. So, you know, it could be after we look at all of those, we want a bigger number. I don't know, but it seems like all of this needs a bit more thought than you were able to give it last week. So I would like to find a way that, um, for the ones in that third column, um, and all the ones that have given us applications, out of fairness to all of them, we can evaluate them together with whatever the right number is attached to it.
Councilman Richter?
Just a quick follow on, uh, we, we're debating about, is this, are these recurring costs or non-recurring? And one of the concerns we had is that the more uncertainty a partner has, the less efficient they are in when they're spending their money. So if we have these long-term partners that are delivering established services, we know what they're delivering, there's some implied, uh, support. If they know that and we know that, that removes uncertainty for both of us and it also improves how they spend our money, which means that we're getting more out of our, the money that we give them. And that's the thought process. But yes, it, there are apples and oranges and there probably are some good ones in the other bucket. But we were looking at, is this a recurring cost that would, we should establish as recurring cost?
I think that's really smart and I agree with that. I just wonder whether any of those others might be people that we've worked with before and have recurring costs. Also, even with the folks we love and have recurring costs, probably might be worth having a review of a contract every three to five years or whatever to make sure we agree. And there's some accountability around the recurring. So I, I, I agree with that, but I think all of this is a little more nuanced than perhaps we, you could just do on the fly in the middle of all the hearings.
Yeah, it seems like at a minimum, we have to have some sort of, um, overview on all these, these 19 that came in. Uh, because basically nobody's looked at them since they arrived. So we have to get some visibility on what they are. They might overlap with some of these, they might be entirely different. Uh, we may even want to do that before we come up with the number over the next few weeks for this whole classification so that, um, yeah, I mean, the, the phrase is true that some have been allocated automatically and others, we don't even know what they want. So it's just not a phase right now because of the timing. So maybe staff could even do a, a first cut. Yeah, here's what they are, here's what they're asking for, these are their needs, here's where they get their other funding. So that, that could come back to PNS or finance or a combination of both of those groups. No, not six people, would have to be going down to two, I get it, but, um, so we could, so we could sort of more fairly adjudicate this.
Well, to be clear, that is the plan, uh, at least the, bringing it back to PNS portion that was shown on one of the earlier slides. The date for that is June 10th. So again, it does squeeze the timeframe for the decision-making, but nonetheless, that, that is the plan.
Okay, were you done? For, go ahead, if you have something to say.
Well, no, I was just saying, that's the plan on timing, the question is, who comes back? Because right now in the 19 are people who are included in this chart has already gotten allocations. So does that undo there?
Good, exactly. I think that's, that's really the question we need an answer to tonight. Will PNS evaluate the four as part of the overall? Or as has been recommended by the finance committee, that the four basically are, are recommended for direct allocations and the others, uh, the other applications will be evaluated, for a, a portion of the 100,000 that will be remaining in the, uh, in the fund.
And again, the categories, as I understood it when I asked the, our finance chair, is that one is probably, you know, more, more regular, some limit, maybe some having it re-up after three or four years. But, uh, and then the others are annual. So that's what I'm understanding the categories are. So, 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 so the four, these four could still go back to PNS in your suggestion, knowing that the intent is to have those going in, that they might want to have longer term visibility on it for X years.
That's certainly an option for how the, the council ultimately wanted, wants to allocate the funds. I, I think it is worth just noting, uh, we discussed this with finance committee, but for the full council's awareness, that when staff brought forward the, the. that when staff brought forward the, the recommended partnership work plan, the category of multi-year agreements were not included. And so, it was from that vantage point that organizations such as Avenidas and Palo Alto Community Childcare are not on this list. Project Safety Net was treated as a multi-year agreement. This happened to be the end of a five-year term. And so staff has been working on an extension to that, and it was for that reason that staff had not included it as a part of this, this, this application process. YCI was a three-year agreement that ended, and quite frankly, from staff perspective, perhaps mistakenly, was not assumed to be automatically up for renewal. And so for that reason, was expected to be included in here, where we dropped the ball, quite frankly, was not notifying YCS of that assumption until really last week, as, as I understood. And then the others, the four that are listed here, Magical Bridge, Third Thursday, UNAF, and Environmental Volunteers, were all notified that this process, the, of the applications, would be their mechanisms for gaining funding through this year's budget.
Councilmember Burt?
Yeah, I'll just add that those four, when we, we had set up with good intentions to, in the recent months, to try and set up a process. When those four were told that they would go through this new process, either they, nor I think we, had thought, oh yeah, and they're going to compete with 20 others. And that the implication is, oh no, you're not going to get that funding. But we might have had a whole different community discussion and everything. So what, what staff had talked about is that this was the first step in establishing a longer process and fleshing it out. And I think what we found is we've walked into a quandary here. And, what the Finance Committee attempted to do is to say, okay, let's break this up. We've, we've kind of created two different sets of false expectations. One, that those four were going to, through the new process, the dollar amount that we set up, or staff recommended, was the same dollar amount as they were funded last year, except that staff, I think, had left off the environmental volunteers, and they realized they had left that off. So there was an implication there. And then we've gone to a new implication to all these other applicants that, oh yeah, you can come in and compete, even if you were in his rep funding, and come and compete for this new thing. We've created a, a lot of confusion through that good intention setup of process. We can force it forward in this budget cycle to still try to channel all that through that new fund and that new process. Or we could take a step back, continue the funding for those four, and establish a new process that we then start figuring out next year, how do we integrate all of the things? And we'll say that, you know, when we, we look at some of these organizations, that we think of it as ongoing services, well, we already have a number of those in our budget. And, are, 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 we have a question, do we think of, which of those do we think is ongoing funding? Like Avenidas, like Project Safety Net, like Palo Alto Community Childcare and the mediation program, and Neighbors Abroad. And, and we really do think of them that way. And, I think there'd be a lot of concern in the community if we suddenly reverse that path and did so based upon kind of us not being clear, and them not being clear, and the other community partners not being clear, on what were the implications of this new process we set up? And I don't think any of us had that kind of clarity. And I think we've kind of walked into a hole, and how do we try to move this forward? And that's what we tried to come up with, that with the, that additional 100,000 that would go toward the new nonprofit partnership fund, that's 100,000 in new funding that those other entities would be eligible for. So, they'd come out ahead as a group, and we wouldn't be cutting the others who were an under, I think, an understanding that the implication was that it was a new process to continue their funding.
One thing I want to add, Neighbors Abroad is funded through the manager's office, isn't it? So that, Neighbors Abroad does not come out of this 100,000.
Okay, well, they put in an application.
Yes, they did put in an application for some additional supplemental funding.
Yeah, I, I still think that the, the basis for any way going forward first starts with staff analysis of these 19 new applications, so we have a clue what's there. But, Vice Mayor Vicker?
Well, yeah, I just, I think that, I guess what I don't understand is two things. One, exactly how we came up with these four as opposed to others. You know, there's still this unknown as to who these others are, and whether some of them, I mean, apparently, Neighbors Abroad, it's different money than you would be allocating in your budget to them.
Correct, that is my understanding, they're requesting an additional supplemental funding.
That was not my understanding, but I could be wrong, because I haven't seen it. So, I, I, I just, and I guess I wonder about things like, one of the wonderful things about the YCI initiative is that it was getting, it, we're doing matching funds, right? So, that is something we would not want to lose, the county 50 grand, right? So that gives it something, perhaps none of these others have that, perhaps they do. But it seems to me that there's a decision to be made, do we want to fund Magical Bridge? Do we want to fund Third Thursday? Do we want to fund UNAF? Do we want to fund environmental volunteers? And then if so, seems like there should be more about how, what that number is, right? Like, and I, I appreciate that you're saying there's some ongoing funding and, and things, but we have not heard from them. And I, I just, I don't know if there was presentations made on it, I don't know where the numbers really came from, right? So, it feels like they were put in there to protect them as opposed to building it from the bottom up, which we could do if we wanted to pull them out and say there's something special about them. But then we're also asking Finance to figure out, is there something special about them? And, and there may well be. And I think, you know, with Magical Bridge, they do have these ongoing ser, services. I, you know, Third Thursday is something that's part of our retail initiative, but it seems to me that should be part of, you know, that whole presentation made to, to, to council, to the Finance Committee. UNAF, they're wonderful, I love them, I've tried to help them, I don't know why exactly they're here. Environmental Volunteers, if they're doing services for foothills, okay, it's a relatively small number. So, but I, I just think that's the kind of analysis one has to go through, and I don't know if that, I, I, I don't know. I, 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 I don't, I, I don't know if Finance in the middle of this budget process is the right way and place to do it, to build it up from the bottom up. But, you know, I, I, I feel like we have this black box of whatever these 19 are, we don't know much about them. We haven't built this from the ground up, and I, it feels like all of them should be looked at at once. And if they're as compelling with the ongoing contracts, and if the others aren't proposing multi-year things, then, then they should went out easily. But I think the question is, even if we put them back in with the others, what's the dollar figure? Is it, do we add this to the 100, or what do we do?
Right, so the, the, the first thing we have to do is get some light into that black box, and see what those things are. But I think everything is still on the table in terms, in terms of the total number. The total number can go up, or it can go down, and we can decide that there's the two categories that there, or that there's one. In, in the scheme of things, of trying to save 6 million in a 300 and some million dollar budget, this isn't the biggest thing that, that we have to deal with. But every dollar, we're trying to, you know, look at every dollar being spent wisely. So I, I think we should stop this item there until we get visibility on it, when we get it back, when Finance first, I guess, but we could get it simultaneously, if you send us a packet on that, just so we can get a look at what's there.
You asked for a decision tonight, so perhaps you could help us think through alternative processes.
Well, again, the, the baseline process forward is that, oh, actually, could we bring up the timeline? Let's see what slide that is, it's earlier. Okay, referring in particular to the yellow box at the upper right, that is the timeline currently anticipated. PNS on June 10th would review and make recommendations after staff has conducted an initial evaluation based on criteria that were established by council direction. If the council via either or both, the Finance Committee, wants to simply get a report of, of what was received, we can certainly make that available to you. Unfortunately, we'll not have the analysis that we are expecting to do between now and June 10th. And again, for June 10th, our packet would be out at the end of this month, in any case. So we're, we're assuming the 11-day lead time between completion of the analysis, the issuance of the report, and then the Policy and Services Committee reviewing it.
Well, you could use the number that's decided on without doing the allocations, and that would buy us more time to get beyond June 10th. You can approve X dollars for all of these funds, and then buy some time to go through the analysis and the awards.
That's certainly possible. In, in round numbers, let's see, if the total funds available were, that's 546, and, and there are some deductions off of that, but if the, if the target is that 546, the, the plan has been to have as a part of your June 16th budget decision, to have the decision on which nonprofits would be funded. And I think with the Policy and Services Committee's work, they could come up with a recommendation for who should receive that portions of the 546 with additional, we'll call it below the line, scores that if additional funding is available, would receive funds.
Yeah, I, I'm suggesting that we can just have a total number for all of these awards. And if that meant that PNS or Finance needed to come back on that beyond the 10th, we would still have the quote approved budget then, at some number. Let's say it's the one that's there right now, and we could have more time to just process the applications. It's, it's just an option, but I don't.
I think that's certainly an option. And, and I think the, the question for me is, is if that number changes, then where does the money? If the, the number increases, where does that money come from? And, and presumably, it comes out of reductions we'll make elsewhere.
Right, right, but we're talking about more where it's going to tonight. That's the, that's the dilemma we're trying to figure out in terms of the timing. And I'm just suggesting that I don't think that June 10th is a hard deadline, if we just come up with the total budget amount. And, that, which translates to, we don't have to make a decision tonight which one of these are in the longer-term category or in the shorter-term category, until we see the visibility of who's applying, to the point that maybe there are two or three that are really hit one of our needs that we haven't filled yet, and we want to do that.
Well, I think the, the question tonight is whether PNS should evaluate the organizations that were, were proposed for direct allocation. Let me suggest, the answer is yes, that based upon the discussion and variety of perspectives that have been shared, that it would be prudent for PNS to run those proposals through the same evaluation that will be conducted for the other proposals that have been received.
There's no downside. I agree with you. I mean, except maybe a little bit more time, but that's what we're trying to buy time on the time, timeline.
And again, I understand this is a study session, we, we hadn't set it up for a council vote. But if that is the consensus of the council, then, then I think that gives us the information we need.
Councilmember Richter is next.
Yeah, I'm just still a little confused here. Big picture, so we have his rep, which last year was 918, 919,000. And then we have this work plan, which is another 100,000. Why are those two different buckets, and why, what's the difference between all these buckets?
Again, fundamentally, the work plan you have in front of you was not intended to create a new funding source. It was to provide a method of evaluating requests for funding through the city's budget. Which again, last year, we had no means to which to do that evaluation. So we had a variety of different requests, and in different forms, some of which provided information on how they would spend the money, some that did not. And so the process we are embarking on this year was a way of telling anyone who was requesting funding through the city's budget to do so in a standard, consistent format. That was, that was the intent. And again, in order to not preclude any particular applicants, decision was made to not exclude his rep recipients.
I think Councilmember Richter, being new to council, is grappling with the bigger question of, what is his rep compared, what are the his rep dollars, where do they come from and who gets them, compared to this other set of dollars, and the people who were allowed to apply for that, right?
Well, and his rep is specifically focused on human services, and, and so has defined a set of criteria for funding various programs. Again, this, this work plan had no such criteria, other than was structured that the evaluation would compare the proposals to the city council's priorities for the year.
So if you look at last year, who did we fund outside of his rep? Is it just these six that are down, that's direct allocations, or do we have others that?
You have those, you had a request from Ability Path for, I think it was $250,000 that was not acted on.
But Ability Path got his rep money, yeah.
Right, so, so the request to the city council for budget funding was for something entirely different from what was funded through his rep.
Okay, but the only organizations that got money outside of his rep last year are the ones that are in the direct allocation. It's those six all received money last year?
I believe that's accurate, though I'm not sure I'm fully grasping the, the question.
I'm just wondering, why do we have all these buckets? And so the his rep being just human services, that makes sense.
Yes.
And so this is another bucket that is a non-human services group.
That, well, it is, it is, we'll say unrestricted, in terms of the, the purpose of the program.
Okay, and so now, this is, we're doing something different this year, because we're opening up applications to these 19, some of which are his rep recipients and some are not. And they're all applying for this new thing that has never occurred before.
I think that's an accurate description.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
I think we're good to go, but, Councilmember Burt?
Yeah, first, Vice Mayor kind of asked how those four were selected, and I understand why that question might be asked of our two new council members. But the five of us who were on council, we had significant discussions on that last year. I don't know why that's, people aren't remembering that. And it went through, you know, Third Thursday was discussion, actually, over the course of the year. UNAF, we had similar discussions, and it went Finance Committee, and it went to council discussion. And so, so that's how those got funded. And, when we were in Finance Committee, one of the things we, we recognized is, wait a minute, we've got several different buckets. We have this third bucket of general human services funding, and then we had on, so we have the his rep, we have the general human services funding, we had these set aside, which are now potentially part of the nonprofit funding category. Then we had things that weren't showing up in either. The Project Safety Net, the Neighbors Abroad. And, what we're trying to do is move things that we had said we want to have as ongoing funding akin to Avenidas, Palo Alto Community Childcare, our mediation services, things that we do at Project Safety Net, Neighbors Abroad, nonprofit critical community partners that we previously said we want to have, will support them on, on, on an ongoing basis. And we set up this new well-intentioned process that we hadn't really worked through and thought about the ramifications. And next thing we know, And next thing we know, we got 20-something applicants for those dollars. Good intentions, and we're creating a whole bunch of throwing everything up in the air again. And I would really recommend that we think about how to not be so disruptive at this moment and move forward this coming year with a process that we have more time to understand its ramifications and our commitment to it. Should the HISREP applicants be applying to this other? Well, there was a decision to open it up to everybody. I don't think any of us, when we set this up, had anticipated that we were going to open it up to everybody who had already applied for HISREP to take another bite at the apple, and that's its purpose, even though the dollar amounts were exactly what we had set up the previous year for these four entities. I really think, the second, I really think that we have had good intentions and created more confusion, and we are walking ourselves into a big can of worms that we should step back and have a one approach that we take this year and figure out our longer term approach over the course of the year.
Can I stipulate to the good intentions and the confusion? And we'll just say that I recall those discussions, and I'd still would say, why exactly these four? Because you mentioned a couple others in there. We've mentioned a couple others tonight. And so I understand the various views on that, and I think that hopefully we will work this out. And I do think that we'll learn a lot from this pilot, and we may learn that, you know, there's, that needs to be restricted, because I don't remember an express decision to open it up to HISREP one way or another. We were again looking at different aspects of this. But I do agree with you, there's confusion, and we need to sort it out.
So the step we need to do is evaluate these new ones that have come in. That part goes through PNS, and then, you know, we can get a report back from them and see where we want to go, and then have a discussion here when we have that info.
Could we be sure that whatever chart is created has columns indicating whether they've also applied for HISREP? Or whether they get funding from the city through some other allocation process? That would be very helpful.
So does staff need any other formal direction tonight after this discussion? Are you, okay, yeah, once again, I know you're not done, but thanks for all you've done so far. It's really good work.
I want one question about plug numbers. You mentioned code enforcement. You were talking about JED last time. I mean, it's possible that if staff looked through the budget and we'd had allocated money for code enforcement, that might be one of the cuts, right? So these plug numbers may disappear. But are there any other, apart from those two, the code enforcement and JED, are there any other areas of new funding that we want to consider? Is it just those two?
I'm not seeing any other lines, so.
Okay. Yeah, I support both those, although we're cutting a lot of money, right? So I can't speak whether they would be untouched, but if I had money, I would certainly give them to them for both those.
All right. Thank you. We're about 45 minutes behind. And we are now going to go into a discussion of strategies for the use of low carbon fuel standard electric and gas cap.
We've been at this three and a quarter hours. Do we do for a break?
We can do that.
Okay.
I was just going to finish the agenda item. And public benefits and not a project for SEQA. Then we do consent, then city manager, and then break. But if we want to move to break now, it's happy to do that because we're 45 minutes behind. Yes, okay. All right. We will adjourn for about 15.
All right, everyone, let's get back here. Get it going. So recap again, our next item, item number five is strategies for use of low carbon fuel standard, electric and gas cap and trade, electric and gas public benefits revenues. Let's turn that to staff.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Valing and City Council, Brad Iggleston, Director of Public Works. So really with the steady progress that's being made now on implementing the S cap three year work plan, we are reaching a point of making more substantial investments of all of those funding sources that the mayor just listed off and that are generated by our utilities. So given that there are multiple possible uses for these funds, one of which has a climate credit we just touched on in the budget study session you just finished. We wanted to take this opportunity to have that discussion with the council about priorities for the funding looking forward. So Assistant Director of Climate Action Jonathan Avenshine. By my side here, we'll walk through a brief presentation which were slated to try to make even briefer than had been planned. After which we look forward to hearing perspectives from council members.
Good evening, council members. I'll move through this very quickly, but if you want me to go back to any slide and talk in more detail, don't hesitate to ask. So tonight I'm here to talk to you about a set of revenue sources that we get thanks to having a municipal utility. That includes a cap and trade, low carbon fuel standard and public benefits revenues. These revenues can be used for, they come with specific regulatory constraints and they could be used for a range of purposes that we could summarize as climate action, resiliency, municipal electrification and reducing utility bills. Although the specific regulatory lists are not 100% aligned with that. These different uses are described in detail in the staff report, so I won't go into them in depth here. In the past, we've used these, the priorities for use of these funds has been on efficiency and reducing emissions with a particular focus on pilot program designs that could be scaled up to achieve the city's climate goals. And our proposed uses in the FY26 budget align with those goals. But given concerns about the economy and utility affordability, we wanted to ask the council to give us feedback on our FY26 strategy and we're specifically focused on FY26 because we're going to be getting more information. We're, we're going through some strategic planning processes with the S cap in the coming months that will allow us to more effectively give you, to talk more effectively with you about longer term commitments in the FY2027 budget cycle. We'll also get more information in the coming months about the economy and federal policy. So that'll help us. So, so for tonight, we're primarily focused on FY26. Next slide, please. All right, these revenue streams. This slide talks about the different revenue streams we're going to talk about tonight. Again, these are discussed in more detail in the staff report. But I do want to, the one thing I'll note here between the cap and trade, cap and trade, which applies to both our electric and gas utilities and can be used for emissions reductions, low carbon fuel standard, which is meant to to be used to promote EV adoption and charging and public benefits revenues, which are used for four specific purposes described in the staff report. These are the, the one thing I'll just note about these here is that the electric cap and trade represents one of the most flexible revenue sources that we have. It can be used to promote EV adoption, assist with provision of EV charging, or even fund active transportation or transit projects as well. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes existing council policies that have been in place on how to guide these revenues. And the cap and trade revenue sources, low carbon fuel stand and low carbon fuel standard have explicit policies adopted by resolution on how, giving guidance for staff on how to use these funds. Public benefits does not. It is subject to state law, but we are going to, we are looking for feedback on a policy for the use of public benefits funds. I'll talk about that in a little bit. Next slide, please. To date, Palata has used these different revenue sources in various ways, including launching electrification pilots for homes, businesses and to promote electric vehicles, buying renewable energy, supporting low income utility customers and reducing their energy use and funding energy efficiency programs. Unlike other utilities, Palata has historically not used cabin trade funds for climate credits, but you've heard about and discussed some proposals for that in the FY26 budget. Next slide, please. All right. So for FY26, staff is proposing to continue the ongoing support for renewable energy and energy efficiency as well as expanded electrification pilot programs as were outlined in the FY26 budget and presented at the May 7 Finance Committee meeting. The electrification pilot programs primarily focus on scalable proof of concept pilot programs that are aligned with council priorities in the S cap work plan. And they can be expanded depending on council direction and available funding. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. All right. So this outlines the proposed policy on the use of public benefit funds. We're asking for feedback tonight, not a recommendate, not an adoption. Essentially, this policy lists the ways in that council would prefer staff use these funds and it also adds some policies that maximize flexibility on the use of these funds within the constraints of state law. And the four bullet points here list some particular provisions that we want to call out in both the electric and the gas funds. And I'm happy to answer questions on these as you like. Next slide, please. All right, for next steps throughout May and June, we're going to continue these discussions of the utility rates and the budget proposals moving towards June adoption. And then in summer and fall, these are the strategic planning and work planning related to the S cap climate section. These are the discussions and meetings that we'll be having on that topic through the summer and fall that will allow us to support more in-depth and longer-term discussions on these funding sources in the FY27 budget cycle. So I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you. Just to start off before we take any public comment, this is a study session, but when do you think this would come back where you would want some action on policy? Just rough timeline.
So the action on policy is part of the FY26 budget adoption. So this is to allow you to dig a little bit deeper into this particular topic.
Okay. Any public comment?
Yes, we have two requests to speak. Our first speaker is Hamilton.
Hi. Thanks for bearing with me. Regarding the discussion of whether a gas rebate is needed now, I have the following responses to questions raised earlier by council in this meeting. The 34% bill increase, it's for the bill, applies to tier one residential users, those with the lowest, lowest and most essential usage. The tier two rate applies only after a household exceeds its tier one allocation, typically affecting higher or less efficient usage. Staff cites a 22% increase, but that's the median across all residential customers blending both tier one and tier two. The $180 annual gas bill increase for tier one residential customers will add financial stress to some customers. When staff says the rebate is for competitive competitiveness, it's important to keep in mind that PG&E charges small businesses a rate that is roughly 40% less than their standard residential rate. In the finance committee meeting, they discussed issuing the small business rebate in the middle of winter in one lump sum. You have time. Deferring the rebate, you would give the UAC time to review the COSA to see if cutting the gas rate for tier one heavy and inefficient users was necessary when the last study showed it was not, why the asset costs were moved from business to residential in the new COSA when they were classified under business in the old COSA. And if changing the methodology for the general fund transfer from using the measure L voter approved net plant methodology to the new revenue based is really necessary or even valid. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Stephen R.
Good evening, council members. It's been a long night. I've listened to the previous item and I also would go continue the line of discussion that Luthsa Gupta mentioned previously and Hamilton has reiterated that we really shouldn't be considering a gas rebate at this point in time. It's something that really should go through the sustainability, a climate action sustainability committee as well because there's no reason to encourage people to use gas at this point. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District has already passed rules that will eliminate the sale of new gas, hot water, heating and space heating appliances. And to provide any sort of rebate to gas customers is counterproductive to that idea. We need to keep in mind that gas appliances create pollution, NOx pollution and particulate pollution if they're not properly tuned up. And they cause severe hazards in the home. So I, I think we really need to be think carefully before we do anything that encourages gas consumption. I think as council member Lou suggested, if we do consider using these funds to subsidize gas service, that it should only go by, by a means testing that people that are definitely, that are clearly stressed financially by having to pay this charge should be the only beneficiaries. And it should not go to people that can afford to do this because it's not in the interest of our climate goals. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on study session item five.
Okay, thank you very much. Council members, would you like to ask questions of staff? Light them up. Let's not be shy here, folks. Okay, I'll ask a question. I have a question on the top of page, packet page 100. I really found that whole paragraph hard to understand. It was talking about competition and even just talking about competition. I know. People have our utilities, they're not going to go to PG&E, but the whole thing about focusing on rate competitiveness, do all that and you only get 2%. So that doesn't seem like it's, it's worth it, but could, can you kind of give me the essence of what that paragraph is trying to say?
So this whole section was intended to give you an idea of how others in the region are approaching this balance between utility affordability and and climate action. And this particular paragraph was meant to give you some sort of a perspective on on how some of these funding sources could be used to reduce electric rates more than they have already.
Okay, so isn't the point of the
The following paragraph talks about gas rates.
Yeah, but in this, in this paragraph here, it's basically saying it doesn't move the needle very much. Right.
That's, that's right. There may be ways that you could, that you could configure the use of those funds, you know, focused on specific demographics that could have a larger effect than that. But just looking at the available funds over five years, it's about a 2% reduction.
Right. And then, yeah, I see this, the, the second paragraph, which has got even more yellow markings on it for me, but that one gets it, it starts to make a dent, but it still doesn't make it revolutionary. So I guess that's also your point. There's only so much we can do.
Right.
Okay, that's, that was kind of what I was trying to do. The other thing is that there's sort of a recognition that we have to help folks get, get over to electricity particularly. And I know you're in process of looking at some of those programs, but this starts to get really expensive and of course, you talk about local agents, local agency support will help these mandates be successful and so on. We should also be doing everything we can to talk to the state about this. And I presume that there's that part of it going on, but I mean, they just, they just start to add up, you know, over in the other page, 25 to 40 million dollars through 2030. These are, these are real numbers that we have to, you know, do some serious funding on. So you're, you're giving us some, some sobering numbers to to understand and, and deal with. Oh, stop there now that we have some lights on here. Councilmember Lou.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure I level set on what is in scope for the study session. So there are two parts, the 2026 budget strategy that encompasses all of the rate and rebate discussions we've had so far. In the previous item, but is also just like general feedback on every part of the utilities, right? Or at least like electric programs as well for 2026. And then the proposed policy. And then the proposed policy for public benefit revenues, that policy is not twenty twenty-six specific. That is a long-term policy that we're trying to create, right?
That is, that's correct, but it's not, it doesn't designate any specific use of funds. It gives guidelines on the types of proposals you would like us to bring forward, but it doesn't, it doesn't lay out a specific budget proposal.
Okay.
So as far as specific budget proposals, we're talking about FY twenty-six and we're hoping to be able to talk more specifically about actual dollar allocations on a longer-term basis with the FY twenty-seven budget cycle and onward.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, Councilmember, it, it really isn't specific to fiscal year twenty-six. We're noting how there are some proposals to potentially use funding for a climate credit and how that ties into these overall different types of ways that you could use this funding. But what we're really getting at is that we're at this point of scaling up S cap programs. The assumption has been that we would use these funding, funding sources, but we haven't had a full discussion with the council about that assumption and other potential things that could be done with them. So we're, we're also wanting to get some guidance on how to think about this looking forward.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, yeah, confirm that understanding. So when you discuss the slide with the policy changes or the public benefit policy changes, you describe how under the gas section there could be low-income assistance programs. And so really, we should ideally make that update to make a rebate kind of possible or within those guidelines. And so is that the move that we're trying to make with the, with that public benefit policy change?
So for the gas change specifically, it's to really get on paper a policy from the council, which has so far been sort of isolated council actions that are hard to find in the record related to how much spending and what the focus should be. And trying to turn that into something a little more robust like we have for the, for the cap and trade and the low-carbon fuel standard funds that puts on record the types of spending the council's looking for with the public benefits funds.
Okay. Just based on, I guess, the description in the staff report, personally, I would say that you know, we can include low-income rate assistance, but we should really lead with the gas public benefit money actually leading to electrification. Is that a move we can actually make? And if so, that seems like the right long-term priority, whereas, okay, we might want a one-time rebate potentially.
So our city attorney's office in reviewing the policy took a really careful look at the different competing state regulations and constitutional provisions that potentially affect these funds and, and the balance that, you know, that they struck with the, for the use of the gas funds is really reflected there in this list. And so I think the use of those gas public benefits funds for building electrification might be a little bit more of a novel use and we might have to go back and reconsult with them if we got guidance. Guidance that the council really wanted us to press on the use of public benefit, gas public benefit funds for building electrification as opposed to electric public benefit funds.
I would prefer that personally, that gas public benefit funds be used not to subsidize more gas. And if they're low, if there's low-income rate assistance, we should be subsidizing electrification if we can. And if that ultimately doesn't net out from a legal perspective, I guess I would then say the gas public benefit should emphasize energy efficiency and conservation measures in broad strokes like validating your insulation and making sure that your windows aren't drafty and those kinds of programs that don't actually subsidize gas. And when we move to an electrified world, will also still be useful for energy efficiency. So yeah, that would be my steer for.
I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up because we do, that, that is the intention with the efficiency dimension for the gas public benefits funds is for things like tightening up building envelopes, things that are valuable in reducing gas use, but also can be valuable in reducing electric use if homes electrify.
Yep.
So I appreciate you making that point.
Yeah, I mean, if the point also is that we want a record for posterity, I would kind of push the low-income rate assistance kind of at the bottom of the list or just add a note that this is kind of the last resort and that we would rather do the other initiatives. And I'm well over time, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor Baker?
Thank you. And thanks so much for this presentation and putting it together and outlining all the good works that you do on a daily basis and that our city does because it's, it's impressive and I want us to keep doing them. So and really appreciate the clearer what is clear that you just said that, you know, the city attorney's office went through all the different kinds of funds we're talking about here and, and what we could and couldn't do with them. So just some general comments and then a, a more specific thing about the, the, the climate credit. And yeah, I was under the impression that whether it was, you know, from the gas public benefit fund or the electric fund, most all of these have been going to the S cap programs that we've been developing one way or another, whether it's, you know, switching fuel use or, or what. So I, I just want to say preliminarily that, you know, to the public commenter's point, I, I wish this could go through more than one committee, but it, it can't. So it needs to go to finance because we're talking about rates and money and budgets and things here. So it has to be here. But with respect to the the mayor's point about you know, the, the dollars are stacking up and we need to talk to the state. That's exactly what that council member Lou and I were trying to do when we were in Sacramento a few weeks ago to talk about the climate bond and really getting more funding for these types of things because you're right, they're, they're not cheap and they are front-loaded as was noted in the staff report. And, but there are things that will pay off in the long run, not just in cleaner environment and all of that, but better health, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, the, the, the results are substantial. So yes, please use these dollars for the programs that you outline if they, you know, if you're saying that you're looking for that direction. Of course, I'm gonna, gonna really underscore that. I also liked where in the staff report, you mentioned that some of these dollars could go to micro mobility and bike ped pilots and that kind of thing as well. And could support local micro grids. There's all kinds of things beyond just the things we've been using them for that would be really helpful to us in our S cap goals. And so with respect to the climate credit, it's just very hard for me to feel good about that, honestly. I would really like to try to avoid using these funds for that, but I know our budget is very tight and I do believe it is important to keep our rates down and especially because it's somewhat regressive for those upon whom there is substantial impact, but if that's something we really want to do for equity reasons, I would try to find it elsewhere in our budget because for climate reasons, I feel like these funds, that's what they're there for. So this, this is a rough one for me. But I want to get clear on what funds we can even use. I was looking at the chart on packet page one eleven. It's the green chart. And I want to make sure I'm reading it right. And then I want to understand what funds we can use for the climate credit. Since I'm not on finance, please bear with me if this, if you all went through this last week. So I'm looking at the, the, the FY twenty twenty-five and FY twenty-six budget proposals, the dark green line near to the bottom. And I think that what we're talking about tonight is that FY twenty twenty-six numbers and which of those, and I assume it's from those that this one point six million we're talking about would come. But I don't see one point six million anywhere, so I assume it's some subset of the public benefits and, and the gas cap and trade dollars. Because I see the one point two nine nine and the one point three oh five. So I assume some portion of that makes our one point six. And, and the reason I, I wonder if that is the case is that as I look through the staff report and I want to check on this, but it looks like we can't, I don't think, use the electric cap and trade money and we can't use the low-carbon fuel service money based on why, the way I read what's in the staff report, but we could use the gas cap and trade for a climate credit. If we were to change our council policy, it looks like the state policy and others lets us do it. Is that correct so far?
So yes, it would be the gas cap and trade and it actually is missing from the, it looks like it's missing in this green chart. But it would come out of the gas cap and trade either FY twenty-six revenues or existing reserves in the upper left-hand corner. The thirteen million there. And that's where we're, you know, that's where we're, those are the reserve, that, that's where we would be taking that one point six million dollar credit or it's a different amount based on what went to the finance committee actually last week. And the council policy does allow for the use, use of gas cap and trade funds for climate credits. It just says you need to come to council for approval if you're going to do that as opposed to
Being able to do it.
Other uses.
Okay. Because I had wondered whether you were also trying to use the gas public benefit money or even the electric public benefit money because I noticed, noted that there's nothing in the statute allowing us to do that, but I noted the argument in the staff report that the legislative history says we can quote, do what we want and kind of don't love that not being in the statute, but, but because we're a publicly owned utility, they seem to have given us some kind of flexibility, even though that's not clear in the statute.
I'm not sure I fault. Can you, can you repeat that?
I can. And I, let me see if I can find the page in the packet. If you look at the electric public benefits charge on page one twelve of the packet, and that's where it talks about the four things we can do. And it doesn't have something like credit for gas ratepayers included. But at the bottom, it talks about the legislative history supporting an interpretation of broad publicly-owned utility authority. And then it cites the assembly floor analysis and has that last sentence in bold there where it says that POUs have total discretion as to how these monies are spent. And so I was wondering if that was, and then if you go down to the gas one, it says on the next page, legislative history described the gas public benefit programs as quote, of a similar character. So I didn't know if we were relying on that to use any funds from that or if all the funds are coming from the gas cap and trade.
It would be all from the gas cap and trade, the gas public benefit, yeah, the gas public revenue, public benefits revenues. And, and yeah, please, please, if there's anyone from the attorney's office or utilities that needs to contradict me on this, I, I think I've got this right, but none of that is coming from the gas public benefits revenues. There was a discussion of trying to use other non-rate revenues. But the gas public benefit revenues, there is a statute, Public Utilities Code, Section eight ninety, that essentially says either you provide these types of, you know, publicly-owned utilities, either you provide these types of programs, low-income rate assistance, weatherization and so on. Or you're gonna have to collect a fee from your ratepayers and we'll do it, we, the state will do it. So we're doing it. We don't collect a fee.
Okay. Well, that's good. I could not figure out the one point six million source in the staff report and that I think is partly what we're being asked to decide on, but I guess but I, I, what I'm hearing from you is it's all from the gas cap and trade and that one point two nine nine number is part of it and then other comes from the reserve. So you know, I guess it's, it's just all about opportunity cost. And I understand, you know, you can delay programs over time and such that we can still do our programs. But if there's any way we can keep this, you know, the, the, the climate intended money for climate purposes, that would be my preference.
I'm wondering if we could have utilities speak to what, what was proposed to the finance committee last week and what was voted on.
Hi, Carla Daly, Assistant Director in Utility. So I don't, I don't believe we're asking council to make a decision tonight based on the climate credit that will return to the finance committee on the twentieth, I believe, and then we'll move on to council. The UAC, but, but just to provide context to that, the UAC had recommended to the finance committee to use about one point six million dollars of gas cap and trade money to, for a residential climate credit to offset the impact of the proposed rates based on the twenty twenty-five cost of service analysis. The finance committee was more leaning toward sticking with the current rate structure and which would disadvantage the small commercial customers and using one point one million dollars of gas cap and trade money to provide a climate credit to the smallest and medium-sized small commercial, small, medium business, commercial customers, because those would be the ones that would be disadvantaged by not adopting the twenty twenty-five cost of service analysis. So it's a little bit complicated. But there's in the range of one and a half million dollars of climate credit that would either possibly go to the residential customers or to a subset of the small, medium business commercial customers.
So is a difference of a half million dollars and a difference to whom gets, you know, who, who gets the credit?
Correct.
And I, and I think there was a, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I think there was a preference expressed by the finance committee for the use of other non-rate revenues like interest income if possible.
That is true. That was in addition, although I think that that's a pretty small amount of money that we might be able to. And it really interests is belong, interest on cap and trade money belongs with cap and trade money. It's, it's, it's the same funds.
Understood.
Well, yeah, on that cap and trade reserve, it needs to stay with cap and trade. I don't know. We haven't looked into that enough. Yeah.
I, I think the bottom line, as I take it from the finance committee's direction last week is they express, this expresses preference for using interest income interest income to fund as much of the climate credit as possible. And then whatever could not be funded through that mechanism to use the gas cap and trade with the expectation from staff that it's very likely that there is not sufficient interest income to fully close that gap.
Yeah, understood. And that, but that's the interest income on the gas cap and trade money.
I think it sounds like staff is still looking at that.
I see. Okay, thank you.
I just want to add as a liaison to UAC, I just want to note that the commission did not make this recommendation with a lot of joy because they understand that and they made it with a lot of angst, but they were taking into account the consumers who are, you know, suffering from these increases. So it was a very considered tough call for them to, to vote on.
But they don't have the rest of the budget that we do.
That's right. Councilmember Burt? Councilmember Rektall?
Yeah. So if we have this extra money, the, you know, the best use is to look at long-term, what's the best long-term return on this? And for us, it's convenient because climate and health and even monetary all pushes in the same direction, which is electrification. And so we could, if we were worried about short-term, reducing rates would be the better short-term solution. But in the long term, you're better off spending that money that's going to improve the efficiency of the community and pay benefits down the road. So I really feel strongly that we should keep this. Don't refund the, don't, don't lower the rates, but instead concentrate on getting more efficient use. Councilmember Lou brought some good points that doesn't necessarily mean just electrification. It could be other things like insulation, other ways. But we're improving the efficiency of the community and that's by far the best way. You know, because whole house electrification has huge community benefits, but also has huge costs. And so we really want to save as much of this money as we can to really further electrification because in the long run, that's going to make the community better. because in the long run, that's going to make the community better.
Other comments? Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. One question, I I know it's kind of come up several times today, either in the prior discussion or now, but really just trying to understand the the impact this would have on reduced rates. The, I know there were several options. The staff report stated that like the. That if we were to reduce rates for our customers through twenty thirty by two percent, that that would only save customers on average about a dollar sixty seven dollars, a dollar sixty seven a month. If we use the cap and trade revenue for a seven to eight percent reduction in gas rates, that would only save about five to seven dollars a month for for customers. Very small amount. I guess my, the one thing I'm uncertain on is that assuming that if we don't take this action of of the climate credits and doing the refund. Is that, are those kind of cost saving estimates? Assuming that if we don't take this action, that those rates will then remain stable through twenty thirty? Or does that estimate, that does that estimate take into consideration likely future rate increases? And then that's how much it would save off of that?
Yeah, um. So the latter, um it it's it's off of future rate reading increases. But I want to separate what this paragraph is talking about from the specific FY twenty six climate credit. The FY twenty six climate credit is, I mean, this this paragraph is talking about. Commitment of large, a large uh fraction of available funds through twenty thirty to rate reduction, which isn't what is being proposed in the FY twenty six budget. FY twenty, in the FY twenty six budget, just a one time uh one point one million dollar uh credit is being proposed. Which has just a short term FY twenty six uh impact um to transition related to the the gas cost of service study.
Can I add add something to that? Because I was a little confused by the question or just want to make sure that we're all understanding it the same way. So I think what we're saying is that there's a program of of whatever proposed gas rate increases uh will happen that that have been reviewed by UAC and Finance Committee. This is not saying that if we use those funds, those increases would not happen and there would be an a eight percent reduction from where we are now. It's saying that whatever those increases are that will happen. There could be an eight percent reduction from that level.
Gotcha. And at that level, it's only we're only seeing this, these savings of five to seven dollars. For the gas rate.
Right, with the commitment of those large quantities of funds. The FY twenty six, um because it's targeted in a very specific way, you're able to have a much larger impact with a much smaller amount of money. And because you're only trying to do it for one year, this these paragraphs are really talking about if you try and do it for five years.
Through the twenty thirty.
You're right, it's it's off, like you and Brad are both right, it's off the, whatever the forecasts are, they would be two percent lower. A dollar sixty seven lower.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I I think that the cost savings for our customers is going to be a a critical goal of of ours, especially. Uh the I think these these rates that we continue to see are really just not sustainable. But when we're looking at kind of balancing our various goals here of saving customer customers money while um while promoting our eighty by thirty and our S cap goals. The, I think the the benefit of saving a few dollars per month is not going to outweigh our um the the work that we've been putting in for years now to try to be able to to meet those goals. So hopeful that we'll be able to find other ways. And I think in particular for being able to help save more low income residents and those who have to be overly reliant on on gas appliances. I don't think it's fair that that they should, that that they should pay significantly more. So look, I'm glad to see we're trying to find ways to be able to uh help those most in need. And then one other question, I know the staff report mentioned the state's advanced clean cars two. It's supposed to eliminate. And the gas cars after twenty by the twenty thirty five. I know the Trump administration is is targeting that. Do we have any, are there any updates on on kind of that? What is, what is that? Does that have any meaningful impact on the work we're doing here within the the city that we're trying to? I don't know that this addresses.
I mean, it does. Progress on electric vehicles is really important to achieving our climate goals. California has done a lot to try to protect its advanced clean cars. Its advanced clean cars, its exception and its advanced clean cars regulations. But. One of the things that we need to think about in the coming years is what we can do to both make that regulation successful if it stays in place and also to um. To uh mitigate the damage if it doesn't. And uh having a robust EV charging network is one of the things that we can do and and um is something that we have been working on in our climate efforts, particularly using low carbon fuel standard funds.
Yeah, and I think we continue that work at the same pace and energy that we that we have been, because I think regardless of what happens with the with the current administration or or these these California regulations, I I would anticipate Palo Altons will continue to adopt EV at the at the same pace, if not faster, especially as they become just cheaper over time. So that for me, it doesn't, I understand, of course, it will have an impact. But for me, it doesn't impact the the speed in which that we want to continue to address it. So, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Burt?
Yeah, um. So I think. Everybody has been clear that we are not happy about the prospect of using these funds to mitigate gas price increases. And a couple of my colleagues have said, well, one, we want to use other funds if possible. Are there other, is there another way that we could mitigate them? Do we have another funding source that could do that?
I mean, I think we heard from the finance committee a desire to look at that. Whether we'll be able to find those funds or not, I think is still an open question. I'm not sure I have an answer for that tonight. I'm not sure any of us have an answer for that tonight.
So no progress yet on finding that a hidden bucket?
I'll turn to others, um but I think it's only been a few days.
Hi, Alan Curatory, Utilities Chief Operating Officer. So at the Finance Subcommittee, they were looking at the interest income for the for the gas utility as a whole, not just for the for the um. The cap and trade, so I I believe the number was a few hundred thousand dollars, three to four hundred thousand dollars. It wasn't enough to match the entire fund. And just, you know, looking at, it was a a large discussion, as the mayor mentioned, at the UAC and the use of the climate um for climate credit monies um from the gas fund. It's not something that is typically done. It'd be a one time event only. We did take a look back at the carb reporting. So uh for the uh the public, excuse me, investor owned utilities like P G N E, they often provide a climate credit. It's one of the most common uses of those funds. We also looked at at Long Beach. They provided a one time climate credit back in twenty twenty three, I believe. So it's something that other public agencies have done. It's not something obviously done a lot, but that we want to put that in context uh for the for the council.
So we had financed, the only thing we could find was this um interest income, which is a fraction of what we're looking at here. And that's when we thought it was one point one million subsidy. So it's fine for us to all say we don't want to do this, but we're going to have choices. And the choices seem to be that we would either use these funds to mitigate the rate increases or have severe increases on uh the new, the tier one residential. Uh or stick with the old COSA and the impact falls on the small commercial. And we can't just talk about what we wish. We'll have to make decisions. I will say that on the broader level, uh when we look at the table on packet page one eleven, we don't have totals there of what's in our reserve and what we're getting in new revenue each year. But I ballparked about thirty one million in reserve, about twelve million per year in new revenue between those four, each of those four categories, growing to about uh fourteen or fifteen million, fifteen million or more by twenty thirty. So that takes us well over a hundred million dollars in that timeframe. That's significant. And if we look at our reserve, we have not been investing those dollars in programs as fast as we've been accumulating the reserve. Is part of the reason that we haven't done that because we really needed to pilot programs to be able to establish how we would most effectively use those funds. Is that essentially it?
Yes, and also we were building organizational capacity and doing studies to support, to tell us the most effective way to use those funds. We're in a good position now to be able to spend a lot more on very effective programs.
Well, and then I did want to follow up on Councilmember Rektal's um point on, and it it follows up on what John said, what what will be the most cost effective use of those funds? And it may be that whole home electrification isn't. It may be also that once the air board mandates on come into play on not being able to buy certain new gas appliances, that we don't have to subsidize that in the way that we did because it's going to be really in a mandate. We may still want to provide some subsidies. Right now, we're 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 trying to accomplish this all through carrots. And there'll be a stick coming down. And so I think strategically, we want to be looking at, okay, what will be the best use of those funds when those mandates begin to kick in? And that's the plan we need to work on. That's the real going forward plan. And I think that what we've been doing to date, uh all the things that John just described are really necessary foundations to help inform us. But the playing field will shift once those mandates come in. And it's it's, we're still kind of thinking that we have to provide overwhelming incentives to get movement. And that's if you don't have any mandates.
Vice Mayor Baker.
Yeah, thank you, and and I agree with that to a to to a certain extent, um as somebody who voted for those mandates. Because they're going to phase in over, you know, twenty years in the sense of it's on burnout and um. I hope the dates don't slip, um but I think that we still need to think about um equitable access uh to this, and so I think there may still be some need for funding even when the mandates kick in, um just to make sure people can can meet it. Okay, well. You said equitable. You said equitable? You didn't say they'd go away. Well, I'm just trying to say that that's why I said I agreed with you to an extent. I think that um much as obviously I'm in favor of them because I voted for them and continue to support them. I I don't know if it'll have that. I think that the community will still need some support and it'll still require dollars is my point. So it will lessen. I just don't know exactly what that curve is going to be. And I I. Because I'm not on finance and I'm not digging into the budget, I I don't know where the dollars come from, but obviously they have to come from somewhere. What I'm suggesting is um, you know, it could even be from more creative sources. The climate um. Efforts in this city are, you know, interdepartmental. There is a lot of different programs we have, and I think that um it's something where it's just troubling to have to to do this. If we did, though, I also agree with um Councilmember Lou that if we could do it on some sort of needs basis, um that would make it somewhat more palatable.
Okay. You don't see anything else, so I think you have our uh comments and you don't need any votes tonight, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we go to our consent calendar. Are there any consent, public comments?
No request to speak on consent calendar items six through nine.
Councilmembers, any uh vote no's or votes to pull? Councilmember Baker?
Actually, it's a a recusal on the item on Stanford Medical Center seven, I believe it is. So I just need to recuse myself on item seven due to the legal, ongoing legal work I perform for the university.
Okay. See, no others and no public comment, entertaining motion?
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt? Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Luthard Hames?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, then we turn to city comments. I'm sorry, city manager comments.
Well, they're all regarding the city, so thank you. I'll take it lead nonetheless. The city clerk, could I get your assistance, please? And I, given the hour, will make this very brief. Great, next slide, please. Just a quick or both recap and looking forward on the Charleston Rastodaro Corridor event that occurred this past weekend. Wonderful event. Appreciate council members that were able to make it as well as the community members that participated in uh really the celebration of the completion of this project as well as uh really uh also a uh preview. Uh as you think about all of the cycling uh activities and programs we have going in the city. Looking forward from this past weekend to the upcoming week. We do have the Bike to Work Day and Bike to Wherever Days uh occurring uh through the latter part of this week. And opportunities for community members to uh participate and and really kind of get in the groove, so to speak. Uh also would note that the city council will have coming to uh your agenda on June second a study session on the citywide bicycle transportation, bicycle and pedestrian transportation plan. Uh so really connection of both events as well as looking forward on the cycling culture here in Palo Alto. And if more information on this is available on our website, paloalto.gov slash celebrate Charleston. A roster there. Uh next slide, please. Then uh the police chief mentioned this, uh just a reminder, this Wednesday morning at nine o'clock, we have the annual uh police memorial uh event at Cogswell Plaza. And uh look forward to uh seeing those of the community and city council that can make it. Next slide, please. Then also looking forward, we have uh the Affordable Housing and Housing Resources Fair scheduled this Saturday, main seventeenth, from eleven to one P M out front of City Hall here. Also want to plug the uh uh report that was recently released on ongoing housing activities. So paloalto.gov slash housing is a one stop uh resource for information, both on the event as well as uh ongoing programs within the city. Next slide, please. And finally, looking forward, we've populated all of the uh dates that you have uh city council meetings scheduled up to June sixteenth, noting that June seventeenth, you have a placeholder date, should it be necessary for any of the items uh both listed and anything else that comes up. You do have a very full docket. And uh as such, uh would expect that if we make any moves, we may need that date on June seventeenth. So just want to flag it uh for you. With that, Mayor, back to you.
Okay, thanks very much. So our last item for the evening is an action item on, I'll just summarize this by say, changes proposed for accessory dwelling units.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I believe online we have Garrett Salz, our principal planner with the Planning Development Services Department, who will give the presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Next slide. All these councilmembers. So the item discussed tonight is in response to the letter the city received regarding the city's adopted ordinance from 2023. And a majority of the HCD's comments were ones that were somewhat minor clarifications or modifications to the city's code and processes, but there were a number of areas where there were more substantive changes to the policies that were reflected in the staff report. Next slide. One of the primary and important differences between what state law has changed between 2023 and today is that there have been allowance for an increase in the number of units in both single-family contexts and multifamily contexts. Where before in a single-family home, you might have been allowed to have one attached or detached ADU, then one JDU. Now you're allowed to have one attached ADU and one detached, one detached ADU, as well as a junior ADU. And the state has updated the provisions for the number of detached ADUs that can be provided on the multifamily law to, up to eight. Next slide. Additional items that HCD highlighted were related to the city's tree protection ordinance, specifically about whether the language that was provided in the tree protection ordinance was more specifically incorporated into the ordinance about ADUs. And so what you see in the staff report and in the draft ordinance is language incorporated into what we call locally our Table Two Ordinance, which is in Palo Alto Municipal Code Section 1809040. And that, that entire subchapter within that chapter discusses the regulations that apply to ADUs built underneath the city's local regulations. It's important to note that these rules do not apply to 1809030, which are a reflection of the state regulations or regulations where the city cannot apply its local restrictions or local incentives for individuals who develop units under ADUs or JDUs underneath those provisions. Next slide. One of the more pressing issues that HCD brought up was how the city had been applying its junior ADU incentives. Specifically that the state had highlighted that the city could not apply junior ADU provisions, that they could only be approved underneath the state provisions. And so what staff has proposed is to remove those provisions from our 1809040, our Table Two section, and instead provide objective design and privacy standards in the existing section in 1809050 about junior ADUs, where the bonus that is provided for building the ADU is limited to how large that, that JDU is built. It would need to comply with the setback requirements for the home, as well as a fair number of listed out objective standards. Next slide. Another item that the state raised as an issue with our current ordinance was that the city could not apply any regulations to properties that are not on the California Register of Historic Resources. And so the city went, staff went through and evaluated how many historic resources there were, how many varied between a category one, which is the most historic resource in Palo Alto, and a category four, which is a historic resource, but lesser of those groupings. And we noted that there were about 684 properties out of our 1,024 that were not on either the National Register or the California Register. So there are potentially, you know, a fair amount of properties that could be affected where the city cannot apply provisions to ensure protection of those historic resources. Next slide. Lastly, one of the items that were raised was about the city's objective standards around kitchen requirements for ADUs and JDUs. In the city, in the, in HCD's handbook, they provide general guidance on using terms around reasonable, reasonableness, or reasonable in size to the ADU or the junior ADU that is proposed. And so what staff intends to do in the draft ordinance is to adopt it to modify the current regulations to conform with the language suggested by HCD. But to continue to identify to applicants who come in at the counter or homeowners that come into the counter, some of the information that we have on the right side of the screen about what our previous standards were to provide objective guidance for homeowners and developers when they're trying to figure out what qualifies as a sufficient or reasonable type of ADU, kitchen in an ADU. Next slide. Staff and the council also received a substantive amount of public comments. And to summarize them, they were primarily focused on how the private city's ordinance complied with state law, suggesting reforms to the city's impact fee provisions, making additional or recommending additional adjustments to the existing zoning code requirements, providing some incentives or considering some incentives for larger ADUs, taller ADUs, and potentially launching some pilot financing programs and others related to pursuing an HCD pro housing designation. Next slide. Staff's recommendation is a little bit modified from original provision, from the original recommendation. And there's an additional modification that staff is making shown in the slide here, which is to approve the draft ordinance, but include a modification under Section 1809030, Table 1, to eliminate the phrase "underlying zoning" for front setback in a specific column of that table related to detached ADUs. Otherwise, staff is recommending the approval of the draft ordinance provided in the packet. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. I know we have some public comment.
We have two requests to speak. Our first speaker is Sven T.
Evening. Once again, everybody, I'm a much less smelly person than returning from a skiing trip. I want to talk about housing in Palo Alto. Okay. We got to get 6,000 units built by the end of the cycle. What's that, 2030, 2031? How many is that per year? A thousand plus units. So we need these ADUs permitted as quickly as possible because I live just close to California Avenue. Do you know what's happening at Molly Stone's? Do you know how much fur is flying in my neighborhood over a 17-story tower? I think you all have been approached by some of my grumpy neighbors about that. So let's talk about Grandma Judy. Everybody go, it's late. Grandma Judy, she needs a place to live. We're building a thousand-square-foot ADU in our backyard. We want it to be a real house. I want it to be a place where my grandkids can live, where my daughter get married and have kids. That means you really need two bathrooms, people. So to limit it to a thousand-square-foot for a caregiver, for them to have their own bathroom is not really that like a real sort of a house, okay? And that's what we're trying to do, is to get to real housing. That's one. Grandma Judy needs a place to live. She's going to need a caregiver. Can we expand that thousand-square-foot? It's not going to break any laws, for the love of God. Two, I'm sorry, I'm having fun. You're all tired. I'm trying to keep you awake as best I can. Two. San Jose has a program that you can condoize, I'm not using that word properly, but essentially you can sell the building itself to somebody else for them to actually have equity in a building. How did my wife and I, who happens to be a dermatologist, and I'm a goofy chemical engineer, are able to afford Palo Alto housing prices back in 2006? Oh my God, we bought a house in San Francisco like 10 years earlier. And that went up in value. And when we sold it, we raised enough money to be able to buy in Palo Alto. So to be able to condoize, you can actually help somebody get housing equity. And further, to get a loan to build that ADU, because if you don't have an income, if you're older, you can have that condoization as part of your huge income coming in. You can strike the deal before you even built. Okay, I'm running out of time. Impact fees. Oh my God. I don't understand it, but I don't think they're legal and you guys need to pay attention and it's complicated. Further, the process to defer payment, because I'm the dad of one of the first female Eagle Scouts, and what are scouts? Come on, people. Thrifty, right? So I deferred payment. And that involved going down to our county seat twice because God bless Ed. He sailed the wrong, he got the wrong notary form and it got kicked back.
Your time is up.
Love you guys.
Our next speaker is John K.
I'd like them to have the slides, please.
Mayor Lowing, Vice Mayor Vinker, council members, I'm not going to try to match Sven's eloquence or his enthusiasm, but I do want to talk about some of the same points. The first thing I want to emphasize is that ADUs have been a success story in Palo Alto. More than half of the permits for new homes in Palo Alto over the last couple of years have been ADUs. They've proven their worth to the community. And now it's time for you to take the next step and show some leadership, both to the community and to the state, and re-envision ADUs from the ground up. We should be thinking of them as 21st century starter homes. The chart that I showed you lays out the problem that generations of younger people in our community and across the state are facing. And my wife and I went to a wedding over the weekend and I heard their stories about trying to form families and build homes or buy homes. And the truth is, this generation of young people is being shut out of the housing market. So how can we change that with ADUs? We need ADUs that are bigger, 1,200 square feet to start with, and eventually 1,600 square feet. Ones that can support three bedrooms or perhaps even four. We also need to do what San Jose has done and create the mechanism for providing financing to build ADUs and allow sales of them. That's this condo process that Sven was alluding, alluding to, and that's allowed by state law now. Now, why do we do all those things? Because there, there are multiple groups of people in need. There are older homeowners who want to downsize, but they've taken out their pencils, they've looked at transaction costs, they've looked at taxes, and they've decided they don't really want to sell their houses and they don't want to move out of the community because they're not going to be able to move into something as good or better. There are young couples that want to come into the community. They look at the sticker shock. The $3.7 million that Zillow says is the average price of a home in Palo Alto, and they think, gosh, this town doesn't want us. And then there are people who rent. They're saying, am I going to be able to continue to afford the rent? Am I going to be able to send my kids to the schools in Palo Alto that we love and adore, but ensure that they'll be able to remain here? You can do all of that if you make those changes. You expand the size of ADUs and you allow for condo conversions of them. You must do two other things. You must get rid of disincentives for ADUs, principally impact fees. And I've tried to do it six ways to Sunday, but I'll, I'll walk anyone through the math who wants to walk through it. But the dirty little secret in Palo Alto is single-family residences don't pay impact fees. And then there's a host of other things that can be improved. That's something that should be left for further discussion. Thank you.
That conclude, oh, actually, we have a more request to speak. Jessica R. Jessica, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Thank you. Hi. Thank you, council, for your dedication to this important issue and all the issues you reviewed tonight. I just want to take this opportunity to speak on ADUs and compliment the city of Palo Alto and staff for their continued thoughtful efforts in adopting an ordinance that can work for our community. ADUs are a wonderful solution for families in our community and contribute to meeting our housing solutions. Impact fees are a huge percentage of the cost of ADUs and are a burden to create livable space. Many other cities have no fees or inspection fees. This can be an incentive that the city can really offer to homeowners. And finally, I echo, please consider the new state law that allows individuals to sell ADUs separately from the main house. This could be a benefit to the city and its residents. And I echo everything that John and Sven said and commend you guys for your continued efforts. That's it. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on Agenda Item 10.
Okay, thank you to the public for the, for the comments. Some new ideas there that aren't in the packet yet, but that's okay. I understand that we're going to try to get a response into HCD by July of this year. That's the goal. That's what it says on the packet.
That was our intent, yes.
Okay.
Just on the, the state mandated, the areas where the ordinance does not comply with state law.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay. So comments from council. Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Don't everyone jump at once. Do you think we're going to do one round or two?
Whatever, whatever it takes up to a point. Okay, we're at 10:15.
I know. All right. Well, first of all, I appreciate what the staff has done to try to bring our ordinance into compliance with state law. I appreciate your frustration that it took quite some time for the state to get back to you while changing some of its own laws in the interim. And I know your frustration is real. On the plus side, it sounds like you've had 250 ADUs permitted in the last couple of years, on track for 1,000 by the end of this housing element cycle, and these are things to celebrate. And from my perspective, I hope we will pass this ordinance. And I hope we will do as we're being urged by some members of the community and go farther. My perspective is that ADUs could allow us to solve multiple housing challenges in our city. My personal example is that my mom lived in a cottage attached to our main house, 560 square feet. Cute, modern, wonderful, but not enough room for a caregiver to stay in when that time came. No privacy for her at all from the caregiver when she didn't need the caregiver right there, which was really hard. So I've seen how valuable and even life-sustaining these small units can be. And I think there is validity in allowing them to be bigger so that we can make it more attractive for folks to build them and really incorporate them into our housing solution matrix. I appreciate the public commenter, John Kelly saying, treat ADUs as real housing. Sven might have said this as well, 21st century starter homes, he said. He's, and I agree that, that this is a way to reframe them as kind of, you know, optional things you might have in your backyard to actual practical solutions that are needed in large number in order to address a couple of key populations. If we allow them to be bigger, we will facilitate seniors moving into that next phase of life, whether they need to downsize, whether they need to supplement their fixed income or both. They could downsize to a small two, three-bedroom ADU and rent their primary dwelling for income or vice versa. They could bring caregivers onto the property in either the primary dwelling or the ADU. I feel like this would constitute a promise to seniors that they can remain in the community they love rather than have to sell and have to pay substantial transactional costs as well as capital gains, maybe even have to move out of state to find a community they can afford. So to me, allowing bigger use, bigger ADUs is doubling down on our promise to doubling down on our promise to seniors that this community you love will always be a community that embraces you. I think treating ADUs as real homes also helps the folks we call the missing middle. Those who earn too much to qualify for subsidized housing yet aren't wealthy enough to afford to rent or purchase a place here. This includes many of our own adult children who grew up here, young adults generally, and working people in various professions where wages and salaries have not kept up with the cost of living. I think if we treat ADUs as 21st century starter homes, we could then allow them to be sold, not just rented. As has been stated, if we allow for ADUs to be converted into condominiums, then per state law, they can be separately conveyed to a buyer and lenders will also respect that concept. It should help with both the pre-construction costs, the post-construction financing. And being able to actually own an ADU will help young adults and the missing middle realize an important yet elusive component of the American dream. So I'm very excited about the possibility of further investigation and I hope staff will, you know, have the interest and the wherewithal to do that. Lastly, I'll address that, you know, treating ADUs fairly in the impact fee structure is important. The notion that somebody doing a big remodel or a total scrape of a single-family home, adding square footage, adding significant square footage pays no impact fees, but newly constructed ADUs are hit with five-figure fees. It just doesn't make sense. It doesn't feel equitable. I hope we can right-size it. Long and short of it is, I believe that these small dwellings are actually a big part of the solution. And I'm excited to see us continue to embrace them in Palo Alto.
Councilmember Bert.
Yeah. So this is an interesting evolution that we're having in ADUs. I, going back to, I guess it was 2005, we had a recommendation from planning commission that I was on that I strongly supported to liberalize our ADU requirements. The council ended up backing down from it. In 2016, before the state adopted their first ADU law, I was among the council members that supported us taking proactive action to go forward with it. I recall one of our, a father of a future council member came and made the case, gee, I just want to have an ADU, a small unit, to be able to put in my backyard for one of my kid and his spouse to be able to live in as a couple, a small unit. And and what do we have now? We have before us already, under state law, three ADUs per single-family lot. We call it single-family housing. The housing advocates still insist on using that as a cudgel, as calling it single-family housing, and that is a lie. There is no such thing, not even close to it. We are now four units per single-family lot. That's a lot of change that we haven't witnessed yet. My immediate neighborhood probably has as high of a concentration of ADUs as any in town, about every other home does, and we had a number that were historic. Neighbor just put one in. He's moving out of his house and renting that, the house, and he has an 800-square-foot, pretty luxurious ADU. Our first home was 1,100 square feet, two bedrooms, one bath. We didn't think that each bedroom had to have its own bath. And I grew up in a home that we had seven of us and two baths, which was a step up from the previous home. And this whole moving the goalposts and then moving the goalposts again, and then moving them again, and then saying we ought to move them again, while we're still looking at, okay, what are the ramifications of it? And it seems that if we, at the flip of a switch with a new law, doesn't have the immediate implications that it will in the long term, and what we do is we double and double and double rather than being thoughtful and wise. I don't know which additional liberalizations I would support and we should support going forward, but I would say that the ones before us are very significant. And we should not succumb to this shifting set of arguments that we get told, if you do this, we will really have achieved what we're aiming for in ADUs. And then the next year comes and said, forget what we promised you. We're going to up it again before you've even had a chance to figure out the ramifications of what you have here. We're going to lose tree protection to a great degree. Is that right, Director?
The ordinance actually reprints or restates the provisions that the city applies to our trees. With the exception of the state-mandated-by-right ADUs, those tree provisions would not apply.
So that's what I'm referring to. Yeah. Yeah. So the state-mandated provisions supersede our tree provisions. They actually, they also supersede a portion of our historic preservation, correct?
That's one of the corrections that we're making with this ordinance. Yes.
And J-ADUs no longer have to have their own bathroom attached. Yeah.
It could be shared.
Yep. So initially, it was, that was one of the provisions. And front yard setbacks are now modified or drastically?
So that was a change from, I forget what year it was, and Mr. Solz noted in his presentation that there was a provision that exists in our code today that should be struck with respect to front yard ADUs for these against state-mandated so no front yard setback.
So we lose the provision for front yard setbacks on ADUs. And now with, on the J-ADU that doesn't require a bathroom, how does that really differ from that just being in addition to the home? How does that really make it an ADU? I don't know. It's got a hallway door. It's a house expansion. It's not necessarily an ADU. It might be, not necessarily. I suspect that we'll have a strong incentive to simply take advantage of an FAR bonus and not create really a new unit. So we are obligated to to adopt all the state requirements and and I think that they go beyond what is good, sound liberalization of ADUs. That was, you know, two ADUs per lot and reduction of setbacks in different places, bonus square footage, all kinds of incentives that we had already adopted and already been in other state legislation. Let's just be clear. The intent is to abolish all the boundaries on it. This is no longer, the proposals when people start talking about 1,200 and 1,400 square feet, that's not an ADU. That's another home. It's a duplex. But then it's a duplex with ADUs when you can have four units. So we need to really be honest on what we're doing and recognize that these are going to be very severe changes in the community. Many of them over time because they don't happen overnight, but they're very significant. And I think that the ADUs in principle, I've always believed, are a good approach. But the notion that we abandon all boundaries is something we really need to think more deeply about.
Thank you. And I know there's another session of batteries in the back. Okay. Okay, I generally am happy to move this forward. I think state requirements, as clarified by HCD, are state requirements, and most of these are pretty minor. I think there are a lot of open questions, like Councilmember Bert mentioned, things that are peculiar and strange, like the J-ADU rules or the rules around not letting us define that kitchens should have sinks with both hot and cold water, you know, things like that. Are strange, definitely at the margins, and I think HCD's letter just reflects that and also reflects a misunderstanding of parts of our ADU ordinance. But I think we still should move this forward. I support it not just because the state says we really need to do this, but I think there are powerful and important arguments to really think about the 21st century starter home concept. I I would be open to exploring going further in a few ways, probably not the reduction, but looking at different size changes in the margins or looking at condoization in the margins, reflecting that we already are in that world with SB9 potentially. So I just had a couple of clarifying questions before I go any further. Do we know how many homes right now have more than one ADU? Have people tried to invoke any of these state laws or, you know, what we already permit in practice?
So more than, what we see is a single-family home, often a J-ADU and a detached ADU. We have not seen, as far as I know, a third ADU being proposed yet.
Okay, but the J-ADU plus ADU plus single-family home configuration is relatively common right now.
Let me ask Mr. Solz, who sees these projects at the counter daily, for his perspective on that.
Yeah, those are probably now more, more common. Previously, I think it was a new home and then attached or detached ADU.
Okay. I'm just trying to think about this a little bit in the sense that we know many, many homes have ADUs right now, and I think the community impact is, to be fair, yet to be really seen and really understood, but it's not obviously negative by any means based on the ADU volume we have right now. So I'm just not sure how much this tips the tides. One other question. I, in our housing element, we had a program for missing middle housing programs, and one of them said that we would investigate expanding floor area limitations for SB9 projects to 1,200 square feet. Is that housing element still program, housing element program still kind of correct as described there? And is it still, I guess, planned for 2026?
Yes, that's a program that we have and, yeah, it's slated for next year.
Okay.
And that's to increase the maximum size of the SB9 unit from 800 square feet, as it is today, up to 1,200 square feet.
Okay. I mean, I think getting to 1,200 square feet in SB9 and SB9 also involves the law split component seems very similar to allowing 1,200-square-foot ADUs with condoization. So I am you know, I am very, very open to the concept of 1,200 square feet. Not sure if we should go further or how we, you know, further than that. I think we need to study that. I think an opportunity to study it might be within this housing element program, and so maybe we could, if it's possible, direct staff to also consider ADUs in that 1,200-square-foot change. So I'll see that idea, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question to confirm. The impact fees for ADUs are zero up to 800 square feet, I think.
I think it's 750, Mr. Solz. Is that correct? 750 or 800?
So impact fees are charged for any unit, any ADU that has 750 square feet or larger, 749 and less, you don't have to pay impact fees.
Yeah, okay. Is there any plan to look at that again in the context of you're looking at impact fees generally and switching to the square footage and so on?
We are, yes. So as, as part of our citywide development impact fee nexus and feasibility study, we will also be looking at a subset related to ADUs.
Yeah. And the lowest price fees are what? What is that? $30,000 or something in that range?
I think it's variable based on the size of the
Yeah, no, I meant the lowest. Once you go from zero, what's the first entry point approximately?
I don't know that I have that, and Mr. Solz, do you have information on sort of the base?
No, other than what you said, Director Lee, it's variable based on the size of the home.
Okay. Councilmember Rektall?
Yeah, when the mayor and I were on PTC, we tried to change it to per square foot, and at that point, state law would not let us. But now state law has changed, and so I think it's a good idea. What?
And that's, that's how we evaluate it by a square foot now.
Yeah. And that's appropriate, I think. There was a bill in the legislature to require ADUs to be rented out at least six months a year. Did that die? I've not heard anything recently about that. It's still still in the hopper, do you know? The, to require ADUs to be rented.
Okay, I think that's still in the legislature right now.
No one knows. That's fine. Okay, I have a question about, this is on page, packet page 266, the 18-foot height. Does, will that then require a daylight plane?
Mr. Solz, do you want to speak to the requirement of 18 feet in height and its applicability to the daylight plane?
Yeah, I'm just trying to find, are you talking about the footnote about 18 feet?
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay.
Number five.
Number five?
And six, yeah.
Yeah, so so there's, so number six maybe is a little more straightforward. 18 feet is allowed for a detached ADU on a lot within existing or proposed multifamily, multi-story dwelling. So there's a little nuance to say if there's a multifamily, single-story dwelling, your height limit would be 16 feet for a detached ADU. That's what number six is conveying. Number five is identifying where you are proposing an ADU within a half-mile walking distance of a major transit stop or high-quality transit corridor. You can build an ADU, a detached ADU, up to 18 feet in height, just by the nature of being in that proximity to those places. And potentially up to 20 feet in height if the roof pitch of the ADU is aligned with the roof pitch of the primary dwelling unit.
Yeah, so, so those two, two feet are additive. That's 20 feet. That, yeah, that's big.
And those provisions were in place since 2023. So those have been policies that homeowners can take advantage of if they're nearby El Camino Real, for example, is the city's high-quality transit corridor or by the Caltrain stations.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with the height so much as the daylight plane because we've moved the setback to four feet. And what happens now is the ones that we, we can't do daylight planes on some of them by state law, but the ones that are under state, under local control, we can require daylight plane. But the R1 daylight plane is, starts at the setback, and because the setback is at now four feet, there effectively is no daylight plane. So right now, this is, it's broken right now from a daylight plane standpoint. We are more restrictive on the side daylight planes than we are on rear. So the person to your side can build a more aggressive, a more aggressive building right up to your or less aggressive building on your side than on the back. And so historically, what we've always done is we want to protect the backyard. So we have a six, a 20-foot setback in the backyard. And then at that 20-foot setback, you can go up 16 feet. Because the ADU setback now is only four, it slides back there, but we haven't adjusted the daylight plane. So even when we have ADUs that are subject to the daylight plane, it's 16 feet at that four-foot boundary.
Right, and and Mr. Solz, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure we have the ability to apply the daylight plane.
Yeah, on the ones attached ADUs, you can do that.
On attached, yes, the detached.
The detached, you can't, yeah, state law. And it says that in the code, it has the chart says no daylight plane, and then the ones that say daylight plane. But the problem is, is that because the the setback is referenced relative to the daylight plane is referenced relative to the setback, when you slide that setback to the four foot, it's, we really need to make that consistent because right now it's more permissive on your backyard. The guy can build right up to the backyard, but not on the side yard. That's not something for tonight, but that's something that we really do need to fix because, you know, if we do want to allow these ADUs, which I think overall are good for the community, we just want reasonable protections that someone's ADU is not going to be in your face. And a daylight plane is is not a big constraint. It just softens the look as opposed to having 16 or 18 or 20 feet right up against your back fence. That's huge. But if instead you can have some type of daylight plane, so it softens it, it doesn't affect the landowner, but protects you. So that's something I think we really have to look at is is within state law, what's a reasonable way of handling these adjusted setbacks that ADUs provide?
Do you want to just add to that? We did have those provisions for detached ADUs, I believe, between 2020 and 2022. And state law changed to be more clearly explicit that even for these table two units, where we are able to provide some additional protections in that capacity, they were explicitly prohibited from even detached ADUs were explicitly prohibited of any height to be able to apply a daylight plane.
Yep.
So even understanding the concern, Councilmember Rektal, we did get clear direction from HCD that that's not something that we can do for detached ADUs.
Yeah, and that's state law, but effectively, like Councilmember Burt said, is that these houses now with attached ADUs, it's just a wing of the house. And it's just a way to get around setbacks and fine, if you want to have less yard, that that's your decision, but when you start impacting your neighbors, then there's got to be some balancing of the the pros and cons on that. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Thank you. I will be quick because yes, I'm on microphone number two also, and I'm also seven hours and 45 minutes sitting on this dais since several of us started at four o'clock today. Yeah, I thank you, staff, for working on this and bringing this forward. You know, it's important that we respond HCD with the appropriate provisions. And so I would echo Councilmember Lou, I think it's important we move this forward tonight. I'm intrigued by the other, the public comments and the other provisions. Honestly, at this hour, I can't process it well enough along with these concerns, although I think it's important that we do so as a body. So what I'm wondering is whether, what my colleagues think about whether we should ask staff to return to us with a more robust decision or we should refer it to PTC for consideration of some of these ideas. Because I do think it would also be nice, and partly the reason I'm thinking of those two routes is just sort of a public notice type function. But I think it's, you know, you've started a discussion, you've brought us ideas, there's intrigue on the dais from several of us. And I'd like to see it fleshed out a little more, but I think tonight we should move the the ordinance in front of us forward. And I'm curious what folks think about how to handle some of the other ideas.
I've actually got a motion. Sorry, so sorry.
That's right. Yeah, you know, your light was on.
I have prepared a motion that incorporates the two things you just said. So maybe we could pull it up and then see if it, see what happens to it. While it's coming up, I will say I was glad to hear Councilmember Burt recount with pride his history of being a supporter of ADUs as a concept back in the day. Two decades ago, last decade, definitely ahead of his of the game. I also appreciate his concern about moving the goalposts without knowing the ramifications, as he put it. I agree. I believe it is our job to look to the future while not getting off balance in the present as we walk toward that future we desire. Councilmember Burt said, we actually have no single-family housing anymore because thanks to state law, every parcel is now four units, and he's right. The state did that to encourage homeowners to join the effort to build more housing, but how many homeowners are doing that? That's my concern. The thing that troubles me about JDUs added just to increase the square footage of a home not intended for others or ADUs added to be a personal gym or a media room is people are taking advantage of laws designed to increase housing and really sort of utilizing those laws for their personal purpose. We can't police what people do in their homes, but if we move in the direction of enabling condominium conversions, for example, we can have confidence that those that do go that route are creating an actual dwelling that others can live in. And we're inviting them to be part of the solution to the housing crisis that we face. So in light of of that, I've put together this motion, this is the item one is what staff recommended that we adopt the draft ordinance. And item two attempted to summarize what I felt were the strongest points from the public comment we received. It reads, direct staff to engage with local architects, design professionals, and members of the public to analyze potential ADU reforms and return to council by October 1 with a set of policy alternatives and recommendations, including but not limited to, A, increasing the maximum allowable size of ADUs with two-plus bedrooms to between 1,200 and 1,600 square feet, excluding basements from floor area of the JADU and ADU unit, waiving impact fees for all ADUs. As has been stated right now, they are exempt if there are 749 square feet and under. And D, enabling condominium conversions to make way for separate conveyance of ADUs.
Is there any second? Okay, then we need a different motion. Councilmember Burt?
Yes, I will move the staff recommendation to adopt the draft ordinance. Amendment A. And the accompanying wording that I think we have already.
Second.
Okay, we'll wait for it to go up and then have some.
And I'll just say that I I think we need to absorb what we've done before we start moving aggressively on next steps. These are big steps that we've done in recent years. This is another big set of steps. We may consider some things in the future. We may regret some things that the state has mandated as well, even if we don't have a prerogative to change it. So I think we and the community need to have a better chance of understanding and letting sink in these very significant changes that we have already.
Councilmember Rektal?
I agree.
Other comment?
I did just want to add that I know we had added in the presentation, just a, yeah, that last little part there, so.
Just to clarify, Councilmember Burt and Rektal, this is the motion from the staff presentation, which is a little different than what was in the staff recommendation in the packet.
One question that I have for staff, knowing your workload, is if we pass an item tonight that was anything more than this, when would you even be able to work it in or even work it into PTC's agenda because it would have to go to them first?
Well, as it happens, I was, I had my light on for the previous motion, exactly on that point. That as a, as a practical matter, as Director Lee or Leighton and I were sidebarring, that anything additional would need to be queued up following our existing commitments for housing element implementation. So really, almost negative capacity. Also, if we take into consideration the likely actions we'll be taking to address our budgetary situation. I do need to accept the changes that the clerk added.
Yeah, second.
Councilmember Lou?
Thank you. I just wanted to check. Does staff see any efficiencies in tackling at least some subset of Councilmember Lithgow Hames' motion in the consideration of the SB nine updates? Or perhaps at least the condoization or the 1,200 square feet permissiveness, if that is a trivial addition? Oh, well, of course, nothing's trivial, but if that's a relatively manageable addition for the end of year, next year timeframe, that might be a way to consider it.
Yeah, I think there's two actions related to SB nine that we're working on. One, at the beginning of this year, the city council adopted some changes to respond to state law. And we have it on our work plan to make that either a permanent ordinance or to extend the existing interim ordinance. And just I anticipate we're simply going to come back with an extension of that ordinance. The secret, the second item is the one that we talked about earlier, where we're increasing the size of those units. I'd be happy to take a look at that and see if there's some opportunities to engage the PTC in a conversation along the lines of what was discussed with respect to ADUs, increasing the size and of them and have that policy discussion through that process.
Yeah, yeah, I think that could make sense in the sense that you might want to collect some similar data and look into some similar issues. Do you need a motion to consider whether we should explore some of those avenues in the SB nine updates?
It's always nice to have something to point back to and say this is the direction that we received.
But how does it fit with this motion? Because that's SB nine oriented.
You can, you can give us separate, a separate motion or another motion to give us that direction. It wouldn't affect, this would stand as is, and then there'd be the supplemental guidance.
Yeah. Would the maker and seconder be open to an amendment to consider 1,200 square foot ADUs in the scope of our consideration of 1,200 square foot SB nine modifications?
Not at this time. Were you done, Councilmember? Well, we can go on to this other comment then.
Yeah, okay, we can come back.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Well, I was just going to sort of pick up there. I think let this motion go through, but I was I'm kind of slow right now, so I was reading through Councilmember Lithgow Hames' motion and just didn't move very quickly, but partly because I was trying to think about the timeframe and the workload and what questions I wanted to ask you about that. So I am interested after this motion in talking about one and how it might fit in to further to further explore this issue. So just, but I'll hold till we vote on this.
Any other comments on this motion? Okay, then let's go to a vote.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Lalling?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, is there any other action tonight?
Yeah, so I guess I probably need some help formulating this, but would like to move that we direct staff to explore further policy alternatives relating to ADUs and additional square footage and other, I don't know, well, I'm sort of losing it tonight, but other options to expand their use. And to try to fit it into your workload, I would say at some point during this calendar year, returning when you're able. Or what?
So I was just trying to do a quick search for, so there is a program in the housing element that Councilmember Lou referenced where we're going to increase SB nine, explore increasing SB nine. Actually, I think we're going to do it, is what we committed to doing was increasing it from 800 square feet to 1,200 square feet. And I believe it's part of that effort, which timelines out at the end of 2026. What I'm hearing is incorporating some of the components of that previous motion into that analysis.
Yes, you're hearing right, just I just wanted to see all sides on that presented, so that would be. However, one says that best, that would be my motion.
I'll second it.
So this, this was in connection, Director Lee, with a planned review of SB nine?
Yes.
So just the ADU as a unit separate from SB nine would also be considered is what you're thinking?
We would, it would be an ordinance that would address the SB nine change, but also amend, as this one before you this evening amends the AD regulations. It just adds a little more. It extends that scope a little bit with respect to ADUs. But it, I believe that we could have that conversation. It needs to go through the Planning and Transportation Commission, and it could be part of that dialogue.
Okay, the language is up now.
I guess it'd be helpful to know what the other components clerk from the previous motion, there was, is it just, I could use some clarity on all the different components that you want us to add.
This motion says square footage and other options. I mean, you could just put it to PTC that way.
Can I speak to it as a seconder?
Sure.
If the maker is amenable, I would like to add condo conversion. So I think it would go to explore further policy alternatives related to ADUs, including additional square footage, comma, condo conversions, comma. Are you all right with that, Maker?
Sure.
Said it? That was, that was accepted? Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Yep. Your light was blocked by my monitor, so I'll go ahead, Councilmember.
No problem. Sorry, to me? So just, so Director Lee, this work is already being done as a part of the housing element as far as the the change in the in the square footage. This motion just also direct staff to.
This motion just also directs staff to do a bit more, is my understanding.
So as I'm understanding it, the city council has, may have an interest, we'll see where the motion lands, to as a part of the staff's effort to update SB nine ordinance, to also take a look at further refinements to the ADU ordinance related to square footage and condominium conversions. We can do that. I can't do it at the end of this calendar year, which is what this motion currently reads.
As my question was, staff, not saying you're doing it now, but already in the plan was to be working on the square footage additions related to SB nine?
Only SB nine, yeah.
Okay, and this would expand it out to just all ADUs?
That's what I'm hearing is the motion to explore that and go to the PTC.
Okay, thanks.
Again, the correction the director pointed out is the need for this to be next calendar year. I will admit, I do not share the director's belief that we can accommodate that along with all other mandated assignments.
But I think I'm hearing you saying that Director Leighton, even you would like that end of that to be revised. Because right now it says by the end of this calendar year.
Yes, this would not be able to be accomplished this year with existing resources.
Okay. I hate to put it out to the end of next year, but I'm, I'm willing to go on to next year, some degree I'm getting a nod from the secondary proposed language for that.
Well, what do you think would be reasonable? What, what would you recommend that we?
So it would be tied to the timeline in the housing element for the SB nine program, which increases from 800 to 1,200 the square footage for those units. So yeah. I haven't looked at the timeline. Councilmember Lou has noted it goes through the end of 2026, and if that's the, the case, then that would be the timeline.
I don't think you need to add a timeline. It just is what it is.
Maybe, maybe just delete by the end of this calendar year and just leave it.
That's fine with me. Do we need to bring it back to council or could we ask them to set it to the PTC first?
They will go to PTC first, I think, yeah. I'm, I'm still wondering if you want to reference that this is in connection with an SB nine housing element study so that it doesn't look like a whole separate project, but as long as you understand what it is.
I understand if you, I think it would be helpful to, I mean.
No, I'm trying to be helpful to you, so we're all right.
For clarification, I believe director is accepting an assignment for increase of ADU size completely unrelated to SB nine applications.
So with the maker?
Councilmember, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so Director Leighton, can you refresh us? Can you refresh us on the SB nine increase since, what, what does that entail again?
So when the SB nine ordinance was in effect, there was some minimum standards that the state established, and the city followed those minimum standards, including a provision that said the maximum size of a or yet you had to allow for at least the size of an 800 square foot second unit. And so that's what we've done. And then as noted tonight, as a part of the housing element process, there was an interest to create more middle housing opportunities, and we saw that increasing that 800 square foot size to 1,200 square foot would add some bedrooms and create, you know, that opportunity. That is a work program in the housing element that just makes that discrete change to go from 800 to 1,200.
So when you have an SB nine lot split, right now they can only build 800 on the second unit. On one split, is that what you're saying?
That's my understanding, yes.
But they could add an ADU?
Yes.
So it's 800 plus the ADU?
Yes.
And we've just allowed ADUs up to 1,000? So you have 800 square foot primary unit and 1,000 square foot ADU?
I believe that's the case. But again, what I'm, yes, that would be.
So now we're looking at proposing the, under the current direction, 800 square foot ADU and a 1,200 square foot housing unit. That's just, that's just playing with names. I mean, we basically are allowing a 1,200 square foot housing unit and an 800 square foot ADU after you've split the lot. And would that housing unit allow a JADU?
I don't believe that's the case. You can get up to four units on a SB nine.
Okay.
Lots of it.
So the notion that because we're doing that on SB nine, which we didn't support as legislation, that somehow we're now obligating ourselves to do it on ADUs. I don't quite follow that. I'll also say that this motion says and other options to expand ADU use. That's open ended to everything that was in the original second part of the motion that didn't get a second, and now it's, it's essentially back without being specified. So it's a big mission creep. I go back to, my point is, we've made some really big changes to ADUs, including daylight plain impacts and FARs and adding a second JADU and front yard setbacks and historic preservation and tree ordinances. We need to see the impacts of those before we go just willy nilly expanding it even more. Well, more as yet, and then well, once we do that, more yet. I mean, this is not being well thought out, and it's not looking at the, the, the impacts of it. I think back of when and, and how people switch their positions. I think back on former Councilmember Stone, I mean, not Stone, excuse me, Klein, talking about the sanctity of R1 neighborhoods, and then a few years later, now he's at the other extreme, and I, I just think we're going from one extreme to another as opposed to good, sound expansion of our housing policy.
Mayor? Councilmember Stone?
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry. Can I just?
Oh, sure, sorry.
I do want to echo that comment that I also made earlier, which is having clarity on the specific actions to take. So increasing the square footage was a, an action, and then the subdividing component. The other part of other areas is, does open up some concerns for me about it taking on a larger project.
Yeah, I see, I see that. I hear her, I hear Councilmember Bert's comment there. Councilmember Stone?
Yeah, just kind of hearing staff's concern and reluctance, and I understand your, your plate is incredibly full on implementing the housing element, and I'm trying to understand as far as what do we need to prioritize to really effectuate that document and to end to end to meet our targets, and I'm, I don't know if this really gets us there. I'm, I'm really, I'm interested in exploring condo conversions because I think arguments made this evening about that being the new starter home, I think makes a lot of sense, and I'm a definitely a big believer in ADUs. My first ability to live in Palo Alto was living in an ADU. My mom lived, as a, as a teacher, only can afford renting an ADU. I think it's an important piece of our, of our housing stock. But in just kind of hearing staff, and I can, I can hear your concerns about this is a pretty open ended direction, so and I think I'm starting to better understand kind of the difference between SB nine and this additional workload. I was thinking at first that it was essentially the same, but now understanding it's, it's not, so I'm, I'm interested in exploring condo conversions, but I do think the other options and then additional square footage on ADUs beyond SB nine seems like it's going a, a little too far beyond what it seems like staff is really able to kind of carry forward within the next couple of years.
It's getting late, folks. Would the maker go for a square footage and condo conversions period?
I, I would. I was gonna say, I think the other options was in there when I was flailing around at the beginning. I don't necessarily need it, but that.
And the secondor? Councilmember Lou, did you have another comment?
Oh, I was going to make the same comment, but also just clarify, we're not committing ourselves to doing this. We are just considering this, and it, I think it makes sense considering the sense that when we look at SB nine, we might look at other objective standards. We might look at the number of lots that can accommodate these kinds of things, and so I understand the staff workload, and I'm sorry that we are adding more, but I really hope it is not too much more, and I hope you can also come back to us if it does turn out to be painful and separate work.
Well, we'll see this again in 2026 objectives, which means something else will have to come off of what you're doing. It's the same old thing. We can only do, have so many objectives, but anyway, so for tonight. Councilmember Rektal?
Condo conversions, how straightforward is that?
Well, there's a state law that enables it, and there's other jurisdictions have, we've gone through that process, so there's some analysis work that needs to, you know, be used to it, to study that, so.
Okay, and would you support studying that, or is that, is that going to be a, a big chunk of work for you?
Well, I, I think that's the focus of the discussion. I think it depends on funding for the department and the objectives that we have and the work that we're doing. So at this moment, I'm, I've communicated that I can address those two items as part of the work effort that we will be addressing with the SB nine program. And but if circumstances or things change, then I'll have to revisit that.
Did it die again? No. All right, let's go to.
One, one other thing. It says bring back to council would be, and bring to PTC?
As a legislative change, it will necessarily need to go back to the Planning Commission before returning to the city council.
Can we? Okay. Are you hit?
If, if it needs to, I assume that was wrapped in to bring it back to council, but if you prefer for us to say it expressly, I, I'm happy to do that.
So whatever you. We would go to the Planning and Transportation Commission and get a recommendation from that body, and that result would be presented to the city council.
Yeah. And just a quick question, the, the ordinance, the, the one we just passed, when would, when, when, when is it effective?
There'll be a second reading in a, in a few weeks, and it'll be effective on the 31st, a day after that second reading.
Okay, so we are likely to have, you know, 18 months worth of experience by the time this would come back to us to consider the next step. I just kind of wanted to throw that in there. I, I think is the timing I'm hearing, so, okay, thank you.
Good, Director Leighton, I think you still need to wordsmith our motion. Can't you just put a period after conversions? All the rest of it has to happen.
I think a period after conversions would work.
Okay. Is there a right with the maker?
Yes.
And the secondor?
Yes, and I just need one question, one thing to ask Director Leighton. Were you asking us to put as a part of your SB nine study in the motion? Would that make it, would that curtail it more?
I, I don't need it, as long as the council understands that that is the effort that this is getting tied to, and that effort has a timeline of December 2016 or 2026.
Okay. Are we done? No more comments? Let's go to a vote, please.
Councilmember Bert?
No.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Yes.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yes.
Mayor Lalling?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
All right, thank you. Thanks to the public for patience, and we stand adjourned.